Thank you for attending today's city council meeting. Please take a moment to silence your mobile device. If you wish to speak on an agenda item after the mayor invites public comment, proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and you will be given five minutes to speak. A timer can be viewed on the podium screen. You may speak one time per agenda item. Please refrain from clapping after other speakers. Thank you again for joining us today. Let's pause a moment for our television audience to join us.
Well, good morning to all of you and thank you for joining us at City Hall. And those who are watching online, welcome too. We'll call the meeting to order. With us today is Detective Charlie Davidson, who will help us with the invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we ask that you please stand for both.
Thank you, Mayor. If everybody could bow their heads with me. God, you are a sovereign God. You are the Alpha and the Omega, the creators of the heaven and the earth, the creators of everything, and God, I thank you for your divine work in your creation. Lord, I thank you for this city of Wichita that is a great city right in the heartbeat of America. And Lord, as we come together today to conduct the business of this city, I pray that you would work through our mayor, you would work through our council, you give them wisdom and insight and guidance as they make decisions for this great city. I pray for our department directors, our department leaders, that God, that you would give them wisdom and insight and direction as they continue to lead in such a great city. God, we just lift this meeting up to you, and we pray that you would be at work in each and every one of the decisions that are made today. And we thank you for everything you do for us. In Jesus' precious and holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 9th, 2024.
Are there any changes or corrections? I see none. I move that we approve the minutes for the July 9th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please call, uh, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. Today for proclamations, we have Americans with Disability Act Celebration and Remembrance Day and 50th Anniversary of Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center.
May I please ask the Independent Living Resource Center to please come forward? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas on this anniversary of the presidential signing of the Americans with Disability Act on July 26, 1990, we recognize this date and the implementation of the act has had in the United States of America. All disabled Americans are considered equal and equitable and should be provided every possible means to provide comparable housing, transportation, communication, education, and employment opportunities. Independent Living Resource Center has worked diligently since 1984 to provide services to the disabled community, facilitating education, empowerment, and providing training opportunities to keep the disabled living as independently as possible. Our community will be resolved to abiding by the Americans with Disability Act and following the example set forth by the Independent Living Resource Center. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2024, as Americans with Disabilities Act Celebration and Remembrance Day in the city of Wichita, and encourage all to celebrate this day."
On behalf of the Independent Living Resource Center and people with disabilities all over, we accept this and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have come a long way in working with individuals with disabilities for their rights and for what they need and how to make things better for them. And we're excited every year to celebrate the ADA Act and continue to work towards the rights and making things, again, even better yet for persons with disabilities. Thank you, Mayor.
And just as a reminder, the celebration will be on Wednesday, July 24th, at the Independent Living Resource Center at 3033 West Second Street North. Doors open at 11:30 with lunch at noon. May I please ask the Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center to please come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas in our community, sexual violence continues to be a widespread public health concern affecting 1 in 3 women and nearly 1 in 4 men in their lifetimes. The mission of the Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center is to work with individuals and communities through comprehensive services and education to create a culture of intolerance for sexual violence and an atmosphere of healing for those impacted by it. The Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center has been providing services to survivors of sexual violence every year with advocacy and support throughout their healing process, and have been providing services to survivors of sexual violence since July of 1974, marking 2024 as their 50th anniversary. The Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center serves more than 3,500 survivors of sexual violence every year, with advocacy and support throughout their healing process, and will celebrate 50 years with a Golden Gala on September 26, 2024. They invite the community to join them to become part of the solution in ending sexual violence. Anyone can be a leader in preventing and ending sexual violence. We all have an obligation to uphold the basic principle that every individual has a right to safety, a life free of the threat and occurrence of sexual violence. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as the 50th anniversary of Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center."
Thank you to Mayor Wu. And my name is Mary. I'm the current Executive Director of the Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center. We have board members and staff here behind us, and I think all of us recognize that we are standing on the shoulders of those who came before us. Because in July of 1974, you can imagine how hard it is to talk about sexual violence now. Imagine how hard it was in July of 1974. And so while we've made big strides and big changes, making it okay for survivors to come forward and tell their story, we have a long way to go. We still see so many survivors who are not believed and who are blamed for what happened to them. And so we are asking today for the community's support and engagement as we set the foundation for the next 50 years. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to the council and Mayor Wu.
And I would just like to use my point of privilege to recognize two young leaders in our community, Ms. Kansas Teen USA 2024 Brylee and Ms. ICT Teen USA Trinity. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Randolph Cabral, donation of a flag to the city council that is specially designed for the blind community.
Good morning, Mayor Wu, and good morning, Vice Mayor Maggie Ballard and all of you district city council members. It's a real pleasure to be here today, and I wanted to say very quickly, given to the previous announcements, especially the Americans with Disabilities Act, I've been the president of the blinded, of the Ameri- of the Kansas Braille Translation Institute since it was founded in 1998. And one of the things that we have strongly advocated for all of these years is the rights of the blind to have equal access to information. One of the things that we have done over the course of the past years, not every year, but several years, is we have voluntarily transcribed into Braille, both Spanish and English and large print, all domestic violence and sexual violence information to all 27 locations. So, you know, I feel like we've come a ways and we're helping members of our community. But today, I'm here to speak on behalf of the blind and more specifically, on the rights of the blind, in our opinion, and I believe everyone would agree, that they should have equal access to the American flag. You know, the American flag is the most recognized symbol in the world. And when you think about that, and America having had a flag for approximately 250 years, you know, it is only recently that blind Americans have had the opportunity to experience it as well, but certainly not to the extent that they should. The purpose of donating this flag to the city of Wichita today is so that it would reflect that our city also recognizes the importance and the need of all Americans to have access to our American flag. Now, we have been placing these in schools in various parts of the state of Kansas. We'd like to start placing these in USD 259, and we'd like for the city of Wichita to join us in helping to make that possible. Each one of you received a small box today, and you'll find in it a letter that sets the precedence for having these flags in each of the schools in 259, and also shows that on a legal basis as well, not that we're here to litigate, but that by law, all schools should have an American flag that is accessible to the blind. So again, on behalf of KBTI, the Kansas Braille Translation Institute, I'm here to ask the city council members, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, to join with us in making it possible for all schools in 259 to have an American flag. I've asked Mr. Hernandez, Bob Hernandez, to come up and say something briefly.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for your time. As Randy was saying, the flag is the most iconic symbol in the world. And it's inspired us in many ways, whether it's Francis Scott Key at Baltimore Harbor, as he saw in the dawn's early light, the flag was still there, or the Marines hoisting the flag atop of Mount Suribachi during World War II, or that iconic picture we see of George Bush on the debris of the World Trade Center. But it's inspired us in many ways, united us in many ways in different times. And as a Vietnam-era veteran, an Iraqi war veteran, I strongly support what Randy is doing in getting those who can't see the flag but can certainly recognize it and appreciate it through the use of the American Braille flag. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your service, and thank you. I will accept this flag. I'll come down.
Oh, wonderful.
Madam Clerk, please call, uh, sorry, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to thank Mr. Cabral for the flag. Not to be too technical, we actually don't have jurisdiction over USD 259. I'm happy to connect you with some of the board members that can help you get these into the schools, but I will take this flag to our neighborhood center and see if we can get that put up. But thank you for that.
And I will direct staff this flag that was just presented. We would like to display it here at City Hall. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Doug Miller, Wichita Area Sister Cities Cultural Outreach.
Good morning, Mayor Wu. Good morning, council members and the audience. I would like to share with you this morning a little bit of something about international commitment through culture. Interesting twist, but I'd like to share a few things with you because of our position with Wichita Area Sister Cities and my particular identification with the city of Orleans in France. Friendly, developed relationships are vital to support mutual understanding, respect, and objectivity. A glowing example of this relationship that exists between Wichita, Kansas, and Orleans is a perfect example of that. It's not just understanding and objecta- it's not just understanding and objectivity, but one with a history of over 80 years, making today, this year, the 80th year. Historically, the relationship began during a time of conflict and that of final peace resolution when the Nazi domination in Europe was lifted. Kansas soldiers fighting in the United States Army were there in Orleans when it was liberated on August 16, 1944. Is there any reason to not see the historical value of such a liberation and to remember those people in the events? Friends, friendships began by extending gratitude and an understanding of other situations. So long before an official relationship was established between Wichita and Orleans 51 years ago, dedication and care were expressed in the 1950s with the gift of the little train from Chance Autoe Industries. There were visits by citizen diplomats and city officials back and forth, city to city. The Joan of Arc statue that most all of us have seen on Main Street was given to Wichita in the early 60s. Then a replica of the Keeper of the Plains was given to Orleans in the early 70s. So gifts, celebrations, commemorations, and exchanges are what promote understanding of other personalities and cultures. Orleans has repeatedly invited guests from Wichita to the Joan of Arc Festival each May 8th. Then there was the River Fest Festival added every two years in the month of September. Interestingly, just the last past week, Orleans has reached out to host Wichita officials during the 2025 Orleans River Festival. So I hope that some of you, most of you, all of you can go and reciprocate. Likewise, Wichita has had many visitors by citizens and diplomats from Orleans. Our friends have invited four ladies from our Sister Cities membership this next month to represent Wichita in the 80th anniversary commemoration of the liberation of Orleans on August 16, 1944. Ladies will represent us from August 14th to August 16th, and hopefully they will come back and give a report to the council about their experience. From diplomats, citizens, university and high school students, musicians, dancers, chorists, and even firefighters, cultural exchanges have grown and will hope to intensify. Mayors Knight, Brewer, Mayans, Longwell, Whipple have all visited Orleans along with Mayor Bogart from the 60s. So the importance is not just political, but extends to a far greater range of interaction. So the challenges of politics, economics, and culture face all of us, and much that is shared in other places that can influence our local perspectives here at home. So while the ladies will be with other dignitaries, a commemoration will be done on August 19th in Wichita to highlight the fortitude of Joan of Arc and to pay homage to the Wichita troops who fought in 94, in 1984, excuse me, in the Allied forces. So the present, please accept the challenge and work to get to know the four sister cities, the organization of Wichita Area Sister Cities, the importance of knowing individuals, and then to come with us to visit these wonderful people who are overseas. In conclusion, please plan to name a council member who can come to speak for us on August 16th at the commemoration at the base of Joan of Arc in the morning. And so please accept this small gift, Mayor Wu, from the Orleans Mayor, Serge Juare. It's a small book that presents hidden nuggets of fact about the neighborhood, little neighborhood parts of Orleans. And thank you so much for your time and your attention. I appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you for your comments, Doug. Diversities are strength, and I think unities are aspiration. And we achieve that through cultural exchanges and through understanding our global partners. So I want to thank the Sister Cities Program for everything you do. One of my first memories and involvement with Sister Cities was when I was in high school and got to walk with the delegation from Mexico and the River Fest. And I know that's continued well before that time, and hopefully will continue afterward. I plan to be there on the 16th, and I just want to thank you. I enjoyed joining you all for Bastille Day. And I didn't have a chance to grab a dessert before I left, so I'm going to have to go back to La Glaire and have a dessert. But thank you for your commitment to this, and thank you for speaking today. And every time one of you speak on the Sister Cities Program, I learn something new about our history, and hopefully people listening do as well. So thank you.
I'm going to do a point of privilege and ask that the Sister Cities group come forward as the city council accepts this book. Before we ask our next speaker, I will just say that we do have four sister cities currently in the city of Wichita. One in France, two in Mexico, and one in China. So again, we recognize that you're a nonprofit organization that really helps with cultural exchanges, and we appreciate your advocacy towards cultural understanding and continuing friendships abroad. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Teresa Molina, Wichita Area Sister Cities Exploration of Business Opportunities with our Sister Cities in Mexico.
Thank you so much for having me to visit with you today. This seems to be Sister Cities Day. I'd like to share with you copies of the business plan that I'll be discussing. So let me. So allow me to introduce myself. I'm Teresa Molina. I'm the president of Wichita Area Sister Cities and a professor of all things Hispanic at Fringe University. I've discovered that not everyone is familiar with the mission and work carried out by Wichita Area Sister Cities, a work that we've been carrying out since 1973 here in Wichita. We're basically the citizen diplomat corps for the city of Wichita. And we pursue exchanges with other sister cities of four, as Mayor Wu mentioned, in the following areas of interest. Diplomatically, for mayor and city council delegation visits. Culturally, for group and individual exchanges. Educationally, for university programs, language development exchanges, professional exchanges for ballet, music, cuisine, judges exchanges, et cetera. Tourism for groups and individuals. But finally, and our topic for today, is economically searching out business opportunities afforded by our sister city relationships. You may have seen us hosting international visitors sent to represent our sister cities. We've had a very busy year. Perhaps you saw us at the Kaifong Song Dynasty Art Exhibition donated by our sister city of Kaifong, Hunan Province, China, at the Wichita Art Museum. Or the celebration of the liberation of Orleans at France that Doug was speaking about, which we do every August. Or the hosting of the extreme cyclists of Tlánipantla, Mexico, who come each year to participate in River Fest and bring greetings from the municipality of Tlánipantla to Wichita, Kansas, riding 200 kilometers a day for 13 days to be able to celebrate with us. You may have also heard the news about scholarships given by Wichita Area Sister Cities for students to study abroad. And this year, we gave scholarships for students going to Mexico and France. And we do so much more. But I want to focus on a special opportunity between the city of Wichita and our sister city of Tlánipantla, Mexico. We took a delegation to our sister city of Tlánipantla de Vaz from July 12th through the 20th last year and celebrated 50 years of a sister cities relationship. Included in the participants were myself as Wichita Area Sister Cities President, other board members, Wichita City Council members, the CEO of Kansas Global, as a consultant, and a group of students from Fringe University, some of whom are Spanish-language interpreters, but notably 15 of our global Master of Business Administration graduate students. Beyond celebrating our 50th anniversary, our goal on this trip was the final purpose that we noted, that of economic exploration. And the master's program students played an important part. Their final work produced was their master's thesis, which today I bring to you in a very, very summarized form. But why, you might ask, would we be interested in doing economic development exploration work with our sister city of Tlánipantla? And I'm glad you asked. Did you know there are more than 2,700 industries located there, making Tlánipantla one of the most industrialized areas of the country, ranking first in the state of Mexico, and exports 75% of all products coming out of the country? Pointing from the study, during the study abroad experience, the student research team focused on three specific industries which contain opportunities for business partnership mutually benefit- beneficial to Tlánipantla and Wichita, and in including the state of Mexico and the state of Kansas. So these industry sectors are advanced manufacturing, aerospace, and agriculture. In addition to these sectors, we even discovered a potential opportunity for boat service on the Arkansas. on the Ark, Kansas. But speaking of advanced manufacturing sector, Mexico's sector is substantially contributing $266 billion in total manufacturing output. That was in 2022. Wichita and Kansas companies specializing in manufacturing solutions may consider Tlánipantla as a prime target for solutions in artificial intelligence, predictive maintenance, cybersecurity, additive manufacturing, and automation. It's also emerged as an agricultural hub, and as the industry continues to flourish, Wichita companies have the opportunity to provide expert solutions to some pressing needs, including irrigation technology, fertilizer utilization, modern machinery, and other agricultural technology. The aerospace industry is growing, and the market size is projected to grow significantly in the next few years. This growth presents an opportunity for Wichita and Kansas companies to provide technological expertise. So as that expands, we certainly have opportunities to discover. It's a simplified description of the findings, and there's so much more that I could say, but I didn't mention that this business analysis was honored by being chosen to present at the Accreditation Council for Business Schools and Programs in June 2024 in Miami, Florida. We stand ready to facilitate any further exploration. We'd like to discuss the plan further with you at your convenience, and we thank you for this opportunity to share about Sister Cities and things that we do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Señora Molina. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 12.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? I'm going to pull Consent Agenda Item Number 5. Motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items without Consent Agenda Item Number 5.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Regarding Consent Agenda Number 5, may we have Chief Snow explain this fire emergency communications program so the community understands this investment?
Good morning, Mayor. City Council Members, Fire Chief Tammy Snow. This is the third phase of station alerting and emergency communications, and basically it is the funding that would allow us to go into each one of our fire stations and rewire. We currently have outdated wiring. We have outdated systems, alerting systems. It would then receive the communication that comes over from, or the signal that comes over from 911 dispatch. It would allow us to modernize our current alerting system, standardize it, because since the stations were all built at different times, have a significant variety of wiring, and also aging of the wiring. So it allows us to modernize it, allows us to enhance or improve the signals that we receive, and provide a redundancy, some type of a backup system in case all the communication systems were to fail.
Chief Snow? Questions? The financial consideration is ARPA dollars. Can you just explain that part for us?
Yeah, part of the money is ARPA dollars that will be utilized to... We're going to, we have the opportunity to build a regional storage facility on some land that was donated to us down south. In that regional storage, in that regional storage facility, we have a dock center. It's Department of Operations Center. It's an area in which we can gather when there's significant events and do some planning and so forth, and the ARPA dollars would then help us equip that room so that it is, so we're able to communicate outside of it.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any further questions? Thank you. I motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number 5.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated July 15th, 2024.
Morning, Mayor. City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened July 15th, 2024 for the following items. For engineering, we have the water distribution system, sanitary sewer, and paving to serve Jackson Heights Town Home Second Edition. We're rejecting all bids. For purchasing, we have the waterworks supplies for the Tap of Kansas Incorporated for Group 1. We have Core and Main LP Groups 2 through 6, and Wichita Wind Waterworks Company Group 7 for the aggregate totals listed from those unit prices, requesting a contract term of one year with two one-years to renew. We have the grit auger system replacement rebuild for RDP Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $50,600. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open request proposals out on the street today, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. I recommend your approval.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Johnston.
Question on Slide 3. Why do we reject all the bids? They're all very close.
Yeah, great question. It exceeded the engineer's estimate that staff had. Specifically, the developer and the design consultant hired, they're reviewing the project to determine what could be driving the high costs, and then if we can't determine a specific area that can be driven down, that would be something a developer could look at, either redeveloping in a different format or selling it to a different party.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I see none. Madam, sorry. I move that we approve the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Morning, Mayor. City Council Members, Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities for the Record. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Rentic addition Phase 2 located in District 6. On April 23rd, 2024, the city council approved sanitary sewer and paving petitions for rentic addition. The developer has submitted revised petitions with revised budgets to meet the current market conditions and to cover cost of a private bid. It is recommended that the city council approve the revised petitions and budgets, adopt the amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. I understand for questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. I motion to approve the petitions for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the first new council business item.
2025 Annual Operating Budget and 2025 to 2034 Capital Improvement Program.
Morning, Mayor. Members of the council, Bob Leighton, City Manager. I'm pleased today to present to you the 2025-2026 Proposed or Recommended Budget, as well as the 2025-2034 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. This may be a little anticlimactic for you, since you have been working on this budget since January. However, a lot of things have happened over that period of time, and I think this document well reflects the work that's been done to date. The budget is brought to you, hopefully in a way that is aligned with our community priorities, as well as the city's mission, vision, goals, and values. The budget and the CIP are available on our website. We've actually been working on this budget since the adoption of the last year, actually the current year budget, the 2024 budget. Back in August of 2023, after you adopted the budget, the staff worked on some preliminary studies of some of the challenges that we were facing, knowing that we were moving into the potential for structural deficits or structural deficiency in '25, '26, and '27. We also, so as a result of that, we started our citizen survey earlier than normal. So in the fourth quarter of 2024, or 2023, excuse me, we conducted the citizen survey and brought those results forward to you in January. In January and February, you discussed the results of that survey. We also started talking about some of our projections for our financial condition in 2025, as well as the future years beyond that. We spent a significant amount of time talking about our engagement process and seeking guidance from you on the issues that needed to go to the public for further discussion before we got here today. Also, in April and in June, conducted additional workshops that worked, that drilled down even deeper on the finances, and then June 4th, we brought to you a number of budget options and sought guidance from you on the direction to move with the recommended budget for 2025. Just to summarize very quickly what we did with community engagement, I'd mentioned we did the survey in late 2023. We had budget roundtables with interested citizens in January and March. We had social media town hall that drilled in on two issues that you identified as high priorities: street maintenance and crime prevention. Had robust discussion, especially on crime prevention, with our residents. We attended May District Advisory Board meetings, and then also we have been using the budget simulator, which is still open until August 8th. So if you look at the total budget, we're dealing with about $763 million in both revenue and expenses. This budget includes the general fund as well as our utilities, and that's why if you look at our revenue sources on the left-hand side, you'll notice that charges for services is actually our largest category, and of course, that reflects mostly your water and sewer fees and revenues coming into the utilities. And then property tax represents about 22% of the total budget. 41% of our expenses go towards salary and benefits, 17% towards debt service, and 19% for contractuals, and again, that reflects the inclusion of utilities in these numbers. You're all very familiar with this chart or table. This depicts the results of our citizen survey. We have spent most of our time in our discussions with you, discussions with the community, and discussions at the staff level on the two quadrants to the right-hand side, the orange and the magenta, with the understanding that the magenta represent the highest priorities for additional expenses in the 2025 budget. I do want to mention that the orange section, again, are services that are rated high importance, but also high quality, and it was important that this budget not provide for any erosion of those service levels in those high priority areas, not just for '25, but for the years going beyond 2025. So what are the main priorities of this budget or that are reflected in this budget? First of all is crime prevention. I'm going to talk a lot about that today. Also, increased expenses or spending for our pavement maintenance programs, supporting economic development, which is really job creation is what our residents tell us, and then addressing housing insecurity. First of all, I want to start on crime prevention. I'm going to do a very quick overview on this, because you're going to hear more information at the end of my presentation, after you've asked all your questions on the operating budget and the CIP. We want to then have a presentation from a number of departments about the work that they're doing on a comprehensive crime prevention initiative, both reflecting work that has already been budgeted and work that will be budgeted in 2025 and beyond. There are three pillars that are in this program: prevention, intervention, and enforcement, and rehabilitation, all extremely important in order to get appropriate results that I think are desired by our community in order to reduce crime, not just in the immediate term, but in long term. The general fund is supporting a number of initiatives. Of course, we support police patrol services and investigation work, but beyond that, we have work that is done by our Office of Community Services in the areas of housing, code enforcement, recreation, library, and then in other funding sources, we have special alcohol and drug programs that help, especially on the rehabilitation side or funnel, or pillar, excuse me. And then we have ARPA money being used for the Violence Interrupter Program, and we have state and federal money going into retail, real-time information center, as well as some other police initiatives. Pavement management or pavement maintenance has been an issue for the 15 years that I've been here and probably for a number of years before that, and this capital improvement program and operating budget takes that seriously. We, for the first time now, have a designated concrete street pavement mitigation program, $20 million over the 10-year period. We have increased the amount of money going into pavement maintenance. This is the work done by contractors, substantial rehabilitation of our pavement. That's $149 million over the 10-year period. And then the program that was introduced in the last year or two, the Dirt Street Pavement Program, has $39 million allocated for it. In addition, the general fund has $18 million allocated for street sweeping signs and all of our day-to-day pavement management and maintenance efforts. Supporting economic development is extremely important to this community. We know how important job creation and talent development is, and we want to come alongside those who are really working in this space, primarily, of course, the private sector. We want to create an environment for them to be able to create jobs and grow our economy. We do that through our Economic Development Fund, and we're recommending that $1 million be transferred into that fund to maintain its solvency as we move forward with some of our initiatives. We also have partners in the development of the new or update of the downtown Wichita Plan. The private sector is putting over $300,000 into that plan, and last week you approved $50,000 to contribute towards that initiative. The SMID is responsible for beautification and safety initiatives in the downtown area, and then the Parking Fund is being overhauled to reflect the approved parking plan. Housing has grown to be a significant issue, especially the issue of housing insecurity in this community. We, the council, when you were designating ARPA dollars, allocated $5 million for an affordable housing fund. That money will come alongside the remodeling rehabilitation efforts of existing public housing units, and as developers are purchasing those, we have approximately $2.5 to $3 million that will be going to assist with those redevelopment efforts. And then we're talking about putting money into housing redevelopment along the South Broadway Corridor, which would be a significant initiative and one that has been in the works for years, in terms of that being an important area for redevelopment. And then probably one of the most significant initiatives that is provided for in this budget is the creation of the multi-agency center, which is to serve the homeless, to serve as a location for all of the agencies or majority of the agencies that serve the homeless. We have tentative agreement to purchase Park Elementary and remodel it. The capital improvement program provides for $8 million to do that remodel, and that would include an emergency winter shelter, as well as shelter services and office facilities for the partner agencies. And then we also have a provision in for permanent housing, affordable housing, as part of that. The operating budget contains $500,000 to assist with the operations of the MAC on an annual basis. By the way, we estimate that the total operating cost for the MAC is $2 million. So we are looking for contributions from the faith-based community, as well as from the private sector, in order to close that gap. Here's the general fund, what our residents most recognize as our operating budget. You'll see here the property tax is the major funding source for the general fund, as it always has been, 36%. Reminder that when you look at the expenditure categories on the right-hand side, that 75% of our expenses go towards personnel expenses, and that would be primarily salaries and benefits. That is a reason that balancing this budget is challenging every year, because people represent a majority of our cost. represent a majority of our cost. Also a reminder that when you look at it by program category, that public safety and public works are probably two of our most important core areas, take up about 74% of the general fund budget. We've been talking about the challenges that we are facing beginning in 2026. And I forgot to mention, the 2025 budget as presented is balanced, and so any changes in expenditures would require some offset change in revenues if you, as you get this budget and you consider any changes in 2025. In 2026, we know that we are starting to move into a structural deficit position. We have taken significant action in order to try to position ourselves for balancing the budget in 2026 already. I'll talk about that in a minute. We know that our structural challenges come from a slower growth in revenues and the fact that expenditures will outpace our revenue growth starting in 2026. This gives you an idea of one of the factors impacting the budget, and that's interest earnings. We have been in a period of significant growth in our earnings on idle investments. We will peak in this, this year, about $34 million in annual interest earnings. However, that's very unusual. In fact, if you look at where we were in 2021, we were somewhere in the range of about $2 million. So that will show you how the budget has been artificially impacted by the high interest rate climate that we're in. We anticipate for that to start to come down, and by 2028, think will be more to about a $13 million annual revenue in the general fund from interest earnings. Wages and benefits. We found ourselves a few years ago in a position of, what do I want to say? We were not competitive with the market as we looked at both public and private sector employers for many of the jobs that are financed or funded in the general fund. And as a result of that, we were having significant vacancies and unable to be able to do the work on a daily basis that is expected by the public. So as a result of that, we've adjusted our wages across the board through our union contracts as well for our non-union employees to be more competitive. But because of that, we've seen a significant growth, starting in about 2022, in our wages and benefits. We do anticipate that that will start to level off to more cost of living increases, but that will be something that we'll have to talk significantly about as we start to position ourselves for 2026. So if you look at where we are today, as I said, we have a balanced budget in 2025, as recommended. We anticipate right now that we're at about a $3.6 million deficit in 2026, which grows then to between $9 and $10 million in the following years. Now, that's in spite of significant work that has already been done, much of it with your guidance, as we were looking at the tiered options from our last workshop. We have already positioned the city to reduce that deficit by over $11 million, the original deficit that we talked to you about, much of it through changes in expenses and then some revenue enhancements as well, and then some prudent use of reserves. We've done almost, we've done a little over $12 million in budget adjustments for 2027 and $12.5 million for 2028. So a lot of work has already been done to position us better for the future. So what are some of the things that we have put in for 2026, and maybe even starting later in 2025? Well, we're talking, talking about centralizing several of our financial services that right now are dispersed throughout the departments, would now be centralized in finance. We have a model for improved cost recovery in a number of service areas. We're evaluating the condition of our fleet and the life of our fleet, and believe that we have the ability to make some adjustments there that will save the city money over time. We are also reviewing areas that have had significant vacancy rates for a period of time, started when we were having difficulties because of our pay structure, but have even continued after we've adjusted pay rates. So now we want to look at what the service implications have been from that, and then determine whether or not there is an ability here to right-size our service levels based on citizen expectations about outcomes. We also know that we need to, on a regular basis, look at our employee compensation and benefits, and we want to do that in partnership with our employees and their representatives. So that's what I have in the operating budget. I'd like to go ahead and give you the overview of the capital improvement program and then talk a little bit about the budget schedule, and then I'll stop at that point, answer questions that you have, and then we'll get into crime prevention and crime reduction strategies after we've had that discussion, if that works for you, Mayor. So on the capital improvement program, again, it's aligned with the city's missions and goals, mission and goals, excuse me. It focuses on maintenance, which is consistent not only with the community investments plan, but also with the council's direction over the last several years. We think it is appropriately guided by community priorities, and it is designed to be fiscally sustainable, and that's why we do a 10-year plan. Here's a look at the revenues that support the capital improvement program. This is big business. This is over $3 billion of infrastructure improvements over a 10-year period. And we know from the community that they have high expectations for us to maintain not just our streets, but our water systems, our sewer systems, and I'll get into that in just a second. But these are the revenue sources that we have that help support those initiatives. And then here's a breakdown of the initiatives. You'll see, obviously, a significant amount of money going into streets and into our water system. Over $200 million goes, would go into the sewer system, but we also are putting significant dollars into maintenance of our public facilities, which is something that I think was ignored for way too many years. And so we're now in a position of trying to stabilize the condition of our buildings and other facilities so that we can avoid long-term, high-cost replacements. The debt service fund under the recommended budget would increase to 7.7 mils. Our total mill levy rate will remain as it is this year. However, we would shift seven, seven tenths of a mil to the debt service fund in 2025 to allow us to cash fund some projects and avoid debt, which helps us with our financial position as we move into the future. We emphasize maintenance, streets, and public safety in this capital improvement program. Our GO at-large debt is consistent with the guidelines, which rely on standard and poor benchmarks that we, council adopted a number of years ago, and we follow those benchmarks closely, and our fund balances are maintained at appropriate levels. Some highlights, I've already talked to you about what we're doing in streets. I won't repeat those numbers. From a public safety standpoint, we're putting $164 million into new fire stations, new police stations, and the purchase of replacement equipment. Over half of the CIP goes towards maintenance projects, which I told you is the main emphasis of this document. $33 million of that will go for cultural facilities, and those are facilities that we own, the city owns, and then leases to outside agencies. And then we have $32 million that would go to other city facilities. CIP does not have maybe all of the challenges of the operating budget, especially the general fund. In fact, if we start to see interest rates drop, we can be, we can see some benefit in the capital improvement program because that will reduce our borrowing cost and allow our dollars to be stretched further on the capital side. So now let me just talk real briefly about the budget process. Probably the most important issue to highlight is the revenue neutral rate, which is dictated by the state, and it says that any increase in taxes resulting from a budget has to be publicized and shared with the public. And the council has to formally agree to exceed the revenue neutral rate during its budget hearing, which is August 20th, 2024. This just simply, this slide shows what triggers the RNR, and it could be, and unfortunately, it doesn't have any exceptions. So if there's additions to your tax base, if you see inflationary impacts on your operating expenses, or if the council wanted to focus on some priority areas and exceed, and use revenue that is greater than what was generated last year, none of those are considered exceptions, so you have to give notice to exceed the RNR. Also, this, our operating budget anticipates a flat tax rate. Unfortunately, that will generate more revenue than we received last year, and so even with a flat tax rate, you have to give notice that you were going to exceed the RNR. The city, we have to file our intent with the county clerk by July 20th. So today we'll ask you to give notice that it's your intent to exceed the RNR, and that's mostly as a placeholder. You will finally, you'll make that final decision on August 20th, so you have time to continue to talk about that. But you lose that option to discuss it if you don't today indicate the, your intent to exceed. If for some reason you decided not to exceed the RNR, that would result in a reduction of, in this budget of about $12.4 million. And that's outlined on this slide. Real quickly, you have three public hearings scheduled. Today's the introduction of the budget, and then you have a evening hearing on August 8th. Then you have another proposed hearing on the 13th, and then one final opportunity for public comment, and then adoption of the budget on August 20th. So today, what we're going to ask you to do is to establish public hearing date for the operating budget, the formal public hearing on August 20th, authorize publication of the hearing notice, authorize the notification of your indication to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and there's specific language that we need to make sure is included in that so that there's no question from a statutory standpoint. And then you, asking you to receive and file the proposed capital improvement program. So with that, Mayor, council members, glad to answer any questions you have about the operating budget or the CIP, and there are a number of staff members that are here. Also, I want to take this opportunity to thank our finance department, all the departments that have spent an enormous amount of time in preparing this budget. It's a significant document, as you know. If you look at the CIP, it's over $3 billion worth of expenses, or over $700 million in operating expenses, and so that can't be put together overnight, and we're trying to do it in a way that's strategic and reflects the community priorities. So with that, as I said, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager.
Yes.
Questions for your staff, beginning with Councilmember Glasgow?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have 72 questions. I'm not going to ask them all today, so don't worry. I'll only ask two, and then I'll pass it off to everybody else on the council as well. Do we have a proposed budget of not, of what would it be if we didn't capture the full And, or even if we captured 4.1% of the assessment or 0% of the assessment? Is there any projections of what cuts we would have to make for the 12.4 million?
Well, I'm going to let staff correct me if I'm wrong, but if you were to only capture half of the property tax growth, I'm going to guess you'd have, you'd have to reduce the recommended budget by about $6 million in the general fund. Is that right? Yes.
Do we have any proposals of what it would be if we didn't exceed the revenue neutral and we did decide to not exceed? Where the cuts would have to be made from?
That's $12.4 million.
I mean, specifically, do you?
We have a contingency budget together on what that, how we would cut that 12.4. And as you can imagine, that has a ripple effect then into '26, '27, '28, because you started on a much lower base. So the, I'm not even sure what the compounding would be in terms of the cuts necessary in those future years.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Do we also have any footnotes specifically about how specific departments have cut this budget, how they plan to cut for the next budget in this document? I didn't see any when I was reading it this weekend, but is there any footnotes of where they've made cuts in this budget compared to previous years?
Councilmember, this is a good question. I don't know that we have outlined, I, maybe in some of the detailed notes, we've talked about program changes, but probably not highlighted significant cuts. We have outlined 12 areas for study that would represent significant program changes, including cuts and revenue enhancements, that would all be considered in advance of the 2026 budget. And in fact, our intention is to do all of that work in 2024, so that we would be providing information to the council at the beginning of 2025. So the adjustments could be made in the revised 2025 budget if necessary, as well as position yourself for significant program cuts in '26.
Okay. And then I have two more questions, and then I'll pass it off to all the other colleagues as well. In terms of the budget, yeah, or in terms of the CIP, rather, South Lakes still has allocated $6 million in the budget, but I think we've had discussions that we've reallocated that to other areas as well, so I just was wondering why it would be mentioned.
Yeah, Councilmember, that's, that's a good point. That's actually, that's $6 million, and I think it's just a matter of timing as the document is being put together. That's $6 million. Does that show in the recommended budget or in the existing projects? It just hasn't been changed. It's in the back of the CIP in what's called existing projects, but that money is being transferred to the MAC, and will help, will be the prime driver for the capital improvements at the MAC.
Okay, great. That was my clarification. And then the last question I have, this is more of a policy question as well, and so this might be for Public Works directly, but I know we had $39 million going towards the dirt streets program. If we reallocated the 39 million from dirt streets to residential streets, how much further in terms of lane miles would we be able to achieve in terms of improvements to residential streets? So it's probably a specific question for Public Works?
So the question is, if you've had between $3 and $4 million annually to add to our street program, I think it depends on the streets that we're targeting. You could do, Gary, I don't know if, or Paul, if you want to hazard a guess on what that would be? Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions here real quick. So the .7 mils that we're looking to transfer for debt service, that's $3 to $4 million? Is that about accurate as far as what?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to double-check my math on that one. Appreciate it. What are the guidelines for the EcoDevo Fund? Who, can we get an update as far as who is eligible to pull from it? What programs do we run from it? Because if we're making this kind of investment there, I just want to make sure that we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed, and we fully understand exactly what is eligible from that fund, or who is eligible to tap into it.
All of the expenses in the Economic Development Fund are approved by the city council. So there's economic development staff, that's the permanent expense that comes out of that fund. And then you have the agreement with the partnership. We have a few small business initiatives, including one with WABA. That's funded from the program. And then we, we've had some studies and special projects, again, approved by council. For instance, your investment in the downtown master plan update.
Okay, thank you. Usually it's 45% or 55% of property we sell will go into the economic development.
Into the economic development fund, with the remainder going to the general fund.
And is that because we just see a slowdown in properties that we're selling?
That's, that's a piece of it, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I guess the last one is, could we get a little more of an in-depth analysis of specifically parks, maintenance, and tree removal? Because if, I go to the page, and I've just been thumbing through this, and you know, any downtime we have, but tree removal, where 1.2%, 1.4%, 1.5% of established trees pruned, that's under our benchmark that Raymond for that 5%. So if we could just get a little more detailed analysis of what's going on there, and just really look at the numbers in the operating budget there.
More than glad to do that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Bob. Quick question, probably the other side of what my colleague asked you. Is there a contingency plan for potentially raising the mill levy?
No, there is not.
Okay. I would like to see some work done around what that would look like, mainly for council discussion, public benefit. As the mill levy continues to remain the same, police and fire budgets are going up. As you said, most of our budget is people, and people are going to continue to need higher pay to, to live, affordable, or have, be able to afford things going on. And as we continue to try to be competitive with the market and the private sector with paying our people what they deserve, those costs are going to go up. And government, we're either going to have to cut out people or some of the services that people truly care about to continue. or some of the services that people truly care about to continue to pay those things. And I think a proposal of what it would look like for a one-mil or two-mil increase would be a benefit for discussion. Asking for those numbers, that would be an additional $5 million for one mil, an additional about 10 for two mils. And as we look at the deficit in '26 and '27, one mil would take care of '26 and help us make easier decisions moving forward. Two mils would actually take care of '26 and '27. And I know that that's unpopular, but you know, most of our public safety deals with property and people. And a mil levy increase would impact me as well, but it would help protect people and property. So I think that's something that should be a part of the discussion. As many of us have said, nothing's off the table.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, have we talked about, I know we have in the past, and probably even before I was on council, about some type of sales tax that is specific to fire and police? Or that way, it's kind of up to the public to vote on to see if that's something that they want to support. And while I don't completely disagree with Councilmember Johnson, the price of everything has gone up significantly in the last 32 years. So I didn't know if that was a conversation that we could at least put something together to explore.
Previous councils had that discussion. A few years ago, that proposal was brought forward by representatives of police and fire unions. And at that time, the council decided not to move forward with that initiative. I do know, based on what's been reported, that the county commission is looking at that same issue, and whether or not more of municipal operations should be funded from a sales tax. I think my position in the past has been pretty clear, and that is that I have concerns about the use of sales tax for ongoing expenses that, I think it's appropriate for one-time expenses or areas that we have to some discretion so that in downturns in the economy, you have the ability to appropriately right-size your budget. If it's used to help pay for salaries for police and fire, I get concerned that you, all of us will be put in a difficult position if we see another recession and I see a significant drop in sales tax revenues. But more than happy to give an analysis of that, that whole issue, and maybe where if you did go for a sales tax initiative, where it would make some sense in terms of helping with the budget. If that's the, at least we'll give that for some further discussion.
Thank you. I will interject quickly. Since there are two staff recommended actions, the first staff recommended action that Councilmember Johnson brought up was increasing the mill levy. While I heard Councilmember Glasscock ask if there was a study regarding a reduction in mill levy. So if we're going to have a study, I'd like to see all options. A reduction, a, a neutral, or an increase so that we have all the information and we can make informed decisions. So refining the staff recommended action one. The second one was from Vice Mayor Ballard regarding the sales tax. We'd like a study on what would make sense. If there was a discussion regarding this, I'd like to know when exactly that was and where that kind of.
It wasn't a study. It was brought forward, and the mayor at the time, after consultation with the council, decided not to move forward. We were not asked to put anything together in that regard.
How long ago was that?
That would have been about six years ago, if I'm, if I'm right. Is that about right? It's under Mayor Longwell.
Okay, so the second staff recommended action that Vice Mayor Ballard asked, I will ask also for refinement on that to see where exactly a possible sales tax could help us generate funds. I will again allow more council members to ask questions, but I do have one quick question. This is regarding slide number 19. When the identified structural challenges were first discovered or announced, was that the first time, or was there a previous time? Can you please give us some background of whom had the information regarding structural challenges? And why just now are we talking about these possible changes or studies regarding the proposed budget? So I know that I think previous years had it, so can you give me background?
Sure. Don't want to go on too long in terms of history, but we had significant reductions when we went into COVID. And so as we modified expenses in 2020 and positioned the budget for 2021, we were concerned about significant drops in our revenue. So we went through a budget exercise at that point. And then as we started to come out of COVID, we recognized that our revenues were more robust than we expected. But then we got into this issue of salaries, and that's when I think we started to look at, so that would have been two years ago, Mark? Roughly, two years ago is when we started to get concerned about a structural deficit. We didn't know what would happen with interest rates, which we knew was helping to prop up the general fund, but we knew that they would go down. We actually anticipated they would drop sooner than what the Fed has done. So we've been, we've benefited in that regard. But about two years ago is when we started saying we need to position ourselves to deal with structural deficit as we continue to see increases in salaries.
What staff recommended action was taken two years ago when the first concerns about a structural deficit were first announced to the public?
Mayor, it's a very good question. As the manager indicated, for the last several years, we've had those challenges. And typically, what we've done is very similar to what we did this year. We presented a number of staff options, and we've worked with the council to develop options to make sure that we had a balanced budget for the year in which we were required to, which in this case would be 2025. And then we've had a variety of options that we put on the list of things to study for the out-years. And then staff has studied those, and then we've come back the next year and reevaluated our position. And if we, as the manager indicated, in some instances, our position has been better the next year, particularly because the decline in interest earnings was delayed from what we initially thought. So we then adjusted our plans for options to reduce the budget, or did not impose them if we did not need to. But generally, that's been our plan to develop options for the current year, and then more study options for the out-years, and then we proceed from there. Also, there's been a lot of fiscal restraint over the, our recommendations of the last two years. We have not offered too many new initiatives, and where we have, it's, they've been mostly council-driven. So knowing that we were going to hit some structural deficit issues, we did not look for, we not, did not recommend increases or expansion of programs. We tried to hold the line in terms of what we are doing. And again, prioritize our spending in the areas that were reflective in today's budget, or today's survey, which shaped today's budget.
May please have an email regarding the council-driven decisions over the last two years that did not expanded or enhanced while we knew that there was a budget deficit looming? So I'd like to know what did we do as a council? What did staff do by the direction of the council that expanded or enhanced while we knew that there was a budget deficit looming? Thank you. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick on that last point. We also took surplus instead of spending down the surpluses that we had, and we put it in the reserves. And that way, we could step down in a responsible way over the next couple of years. So I did just want to add that in as well.
That's correct.
Just, I just wanted to piggyback on what Vice Mayor Ballard had said. If we could get some sort of maybe an analysis of a MAPS-type program like they have in Tulsa, where the public gets to have some feedback on projects and possible sales tax funding that way. I think that would be a good way of allowing the public to have a say in the taxes that come their way, and also give us another revenue stream to do some of our CIP projects. That way, it relieves a little bit of stress off our CIP, maybe our budget in total, and we can shift some money around to help cover the holes that we're facing. So just wanted to add that in as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I don't know why my name was up there again. Sorry.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, I just, and thank you for the presentation, Bob, and I'll have some thank yous later after the public comment. But I just wanted to provide a little context, and then also go on record for something. When you, Vice Mayor, asked about the sales tax for police and fire, I remember having this conversation my first year on council. This is going to be my sixth budget that I've gone through this process. So we had that discussion, and we decided not to proceed with the sales tax for police and fire if it was not for just capital projects, as you mentioned. And at the time, there was a city, I think in Arizona, and I can go back and look at my notes, that did it for salaries for police and fire. And then they had an economic downturn, and so they didn't capture as much sales tax as they anticipated, and they actually had to let police and fire go. They had to, you know, terminate their positions because they couldn't afford it. So I just kind of want to go on record that I'm absolutely supportive of a sunsetted sales tax for capital projects if we find that we can help ease our CIP. But it would be really hard for me at this point to look at any kind of sales tax that would support just general operation for that reason. We never know what kind of economic times we're going to go into. We didn't know before 2008, we didn't know before the pandemic, who could have predicted the inflation now? So just want to make sure if we do have a sales tax, in my opinion, it should only be for capital. Thank you.
I see no further questions for staff, so I'll ask just a couple. Councilmember Johnston.
I could wait till after you too, that's all right. Okay. I will point out that the property tax increases have been significant over the last two years. And we're the beneficiary of some of that money. So I, I don't see a need for an increase in the mill levy. But I think that property, people are worried about property taxes going up significantly year over year over year. Thank you.
I will ask a couple of more questions. Sorry, I have a lot of them. So first and foremost, I'm going to go back. This was not part of our booklet of items this time, but it is part of what we've had during the workshop. So I'm going to come to this because I think it's important to look at this. This is the 2025-26 proposed budget tiered options for consideration. First, I wanted to know, how can we advance some of those planned changes? So I don't know if that's a staff recommended, a staff recommendation, a council-driven staff recommendation, but can you tell me how we can advance some of these changes for 2025 so that we're in a better position in '26, '27, '28?
Mayor, the, some of the initiatives that are built into our recommendations for '26 already could be advanced. For instance, I mentioned the streamlining of financial operations, consolidation of operations into the finance department. That's one area where we could implement that earlier. We had also talked about a study of collapsing our middle management. That's something that we could advance in terms of our work on that to see if that is possible to implement in '25. There are, let me look at here again. We did talk a little bit about decoupling our cultural arts funding from the assessed valuation increase, and instead to target the increases to our operating budget increase, that could be implemented in '25. But we'd have to make sure that we had ample time for the agencies to plan for whatever that reduction would be. If you remember, in '90, in '26, we thought that would result in about $200,000 in savings, but it could be up to almost a half million dollars in savings over time. So that could position you a little quicker in terms of savings. And then I, we have a number of items that we said we would explore in terms of studies, including the right-sizing of some of our maintenance operations. But again, we, that's going to take a little more time. If we're diligent in reviewing those in this fall, during the fall, they could be possibly, whatever we recommend could be implemented in '25. But I don't know that I could give you a good number today on what, you know, what that would save in '25.
So I have a staff recommended action to look within the next month before we come back for the actual final vote regarding the budget. I'd like to see places where we can advance some of these tiered considerations to advance us to be in a better position, knowing for sure that we will have a budget deficit. My next question, really quickly, is about our debt service. So Mark, questions? Our current SMP, sorry, standards, our Moody's number, can you tell us what our rating currently is? And how this will affect us if we did no changes and we continued incurring this type of debt?
Yeah, I believe our Moody's rating is AA2 right now. We take rating agency considerations very, very seriously because they're very important to us, because we do issue debt. We're active in the capital markets, that's just the way we finance our capital improvements. The rating agencies, including Moody's and Standard and Poor's, just simplistically, they look at, they look at our economy, they look at some things that are outside of our control, but they do look at a lot of things that are inside our control. They look at our liquidity in our funds, and that's why the manager mentioned the debt service fund and how it was within our financial parameters. One thing that he meant by that was our balance in the debt service fund is adequate so that we have enough liquidity if we have challenges. They look at that very, very carefully. Same with the general fund. They look at our operating deficits. They do not like it when they see our reserves decline. And we've had, I don't know, 13 years in a row when our reserves have increased, which of course is very good. They understand, and we're very transparent with them. We under, we explain our situation to them every time we have a ratings call, and they are very well aware of what our situation is. But if you read their ratings report, they opine on our financial management of our organization. And this may sound a little self-serving, but typically, what they say is that they have very high level of confidence in our organization because they know that we face challenges consistently in the past, and we always find a way to fix our challenges, and again, produce budget surpluses, which again, we've done for the last 12 years or so. So in summary, Mayor, I'd say it's important that we have operating surpluses in the general fund. It's important that we take our financial future seriously and take action to resolve our issues. It's important that we maintain adequate liquidity in our funds, particularly debt service fund. And finally, I'd say it's important that we keep our debt levels within a reasonable level. And again, the manager mentioned that we have performance measures in which we do that, and they, they monitor that too, and we typically keep that at a very conservative level. So does that answer your question?
Can you also answer what our current reserves are? And what is a healthy reserve for a city our size and our budget?
Yeah, very good question. There is no one right answer. There's a lot of different literature out there, and it kind of depends on what your reserves are for. Generally, maintaining at least a two-month reserve is what's considered appropriate. And two months is, I think, somewhere around 16%. Our policy, of course, is 15%, which is in that ballpark. You'll see some cities that maintain a minimum reserve of 30% or even more. Again, it's just a policy matter. We, as I mentioned, have a reserve policy of 15%, which we, which we have. That, in our cases, I believe, around $49 million. Again, that's important to show them. And as I think the manager mentioned, we also have the permanent reserve, which the council set up several years ago as stabilization reserve to help us smooth challenges into the future. And if my memory is correct, I think there's $23 million? Somewhere in that ballpark. Most of which has been set aside over the last couple of years, like Councilmember Hoche mentioned. When we had some abnormally high interest earnings, we put it in the permanent reserve stabilization fund. Mayor, if I can, just to add to that, one of the things that, one of the most important financial things that the council did last year was adopting a reserve policy, which, and I say that's important, but especially for Moody's and Standard and Poor's, so that they know there's policy guidance on how we put money into the reserves and how we take money out, and what our targets are for each of the reserve funds that Mark just outlined. And so we.
And so we, this budget is anticipating that we will stay consistent with your reserve policies, but we have highlighted in the document that if we continue to move in the direction that, without a balanced budget, that we would dip below the reserve policies. And so that's why we have to present balanced budgets and find a way to balance '26 and 20, or '27 and '28.
Thank you. Councilmember Glasscock.
This goes in line with that question too. This budget, to balance this budget, does it take anything?
I'm sorry, sir?
To balance this budget, does it take anything from reserves currently?
Uh, no, not in 2025, no.
And how much are we projecting in 2026 from reserves to balance?
Uh, the budget has $3 million coming out of the permanent reserve to improve our situation in '26.
Twenty six, and is that the same in '27 and '28?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one point of clarification, I believe it's $32 million in the permanent reserve? Elizabeth? Thirty-two? Okay. All right, appreciate it.
To get that correct, so $32 million in the permanent reserve and $23 million in the stabilization reserve. There was a $49 million amount that was also thrown out earlier, so I just want to get all the numbers correct.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, let me provide that information to you after the meeting. The general fund balance is about $49 million. In addition to that, we have the stabilization reserve, sometimes also called the permanent reserve, they're one and the same. And that's the amount, I'm sorry, I just, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Mark, you may just want to stay there. Thank you. And I'm going to ask a question and please correct me if I'm absolutely wrong always. I tell you all the time, you've done such a great job schooling me up on this, but I always have something to learn. But when we were talking about our credit rating, something that I know all of us are extremely interested in and it's very important. And some say that we may have, they believe we have too high of a debt service and that is because we have specials that many other communities don't. Is that correct? And could you just maybe highlight that for us and the importance of us having specials in terms of growth and development of our community that other communities might not offer?
Yes, ma'am. The rating agencies do consider our debt load to be higher than what they would consider norms. And when I say they consider norms, they have a variety of empiric parameters for cities. It's very objective. Now, there is some subjectivity, which actually benefits us because they think that we're very well managed, but there are very objective debt measures. We actually should be rated lower than what we actually are if they followed their own metrics. But again, they use subjective measures and they, what they call notch us up because they believe that we're well managed financially. But yes, ma'am, they think our debt level's too high, they measure it a variety of ways. But one reason is, is because of our special assessment program. We have somewhere in neighborhood $165 million in special assessment debt right now, it's been higher in the past. Now, that of course is not paid by taxpayers, it's paid by property owners for special assessments on their homes and we emphasize that to them. In fact, our amount of debt paid by property tax owners is 59 million, very, much smaller. You recall when I do quarterly presentations, I show the little pie chart of our debt and I show you the little slice, it's about 4% of our debt portfolio, that's our property tax funded debt. But they do look at a bigger picture and so, yes, ma'am, they do believe that our GO, general obligation debt level is too high and one reason that they believe it's too high is because of our special assessment debt.
So sometimes there is good debt. Thank you.
I see no further questions regarding this, so I'm now going to move to the capital improvement program questions because we are asking about two budgets here. Now moving to the capital improvement project, I have questions regarding Century Two, the convention center and the Hyatt promenade. I think a separation between understanding Bob Brown Expo and Century Two would be appropriate at this time. Can we talk about that?
Yes, and I'll rely on staff to supplement my comments. The CIP allows for maintenance for the, what we will call the Round Building, the, and I call that Century Two itself. And those are, I think it's about $10 million, roughly $10 million for ongoing improvements to that building. It includes heating and cooling and plumbing and electrical improvements as well, and I can't remember all the other items that we identified a few years ago as needs for that building. On top of that, we realize that the discussion about convention facilities here in the community is going to be a long-term discussion. Two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, I presented a plan for improvements to the, to C2 and to Bob Brown. But even at that reduced scale, it was still a sizable project and one that would have to, that would require a voter initiative or approval of an initiative by the voters. In the meantime, we continue to lose business to not just venues in cities our size, but to smaller communities as well. We're losing statewide conferences, we're losing regional conferences. And so I met with the group that manages C2 for us, along with Visit Wichita, and said, what would it take for us with our existing facilities to be more competitive? So what you have in there, in the recommended CIP, are some improvements to the area that is between the, that includes the promenade, the city-owned spaces in the promenade, all the way to the spaces entering into Bob Brown, so that we can put our best foot forward. What we find unfortunately is that when meeting planners work with Visit Wichita, as soon as they step out of Hyatt, the Hyatt, into our promenade area, they're turned off and it's, it's really hard to turn them around in terms of selling that, our space. And in fact, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but Susie Santo has said that for some meetings, they've even had to offer to give the building away for free and even then could not necessarily book some of the groups into the building. So we said, what would make a difference, knowing that we're not ready to have those sizable capital investments in Bob Brown yet? And that's when they came back with the recommendations that the Hyatt group is going to be upgrading their lobbies and their meeting space. And they have asked if we would follow suit to upgrade our meeting space in the promenade area and then we would take that same decor and transition that all the way to Bob Brown so that you would have really the seamless improvement that would, I think, make it much more, make us much more competitive, given the facilities that we have. Now, that's not going to change the ceiling heights of Bob Brown, it's not going to increase the number of square feet that we have in Bob Brown, but it'll at least make us more competitive for some of those conferences that used to come to us on a regular basis where maybe they were on a cycle of coming to Wichita every other year, maybe they go to Overland Park the year, you know, the off year. And those are the, so we're trying to be more competitive with what I would say is somewhat a minimal investment today. We have also teed up for you a discussion, hopefully this year, on what your thoughts are about moving forward and what a timetable could be for a Bob Brown expansion and remodel. But we have only put that in as a placeholder, we've not identified any funding source and we know that that will be a long discussion and probably involve community partners as well.
And according to the CIP, the study back in 2017 showed a renovation total of $272 million and a reconstruction cost of $492 million. But again, these are numbers from back in 2017.
Right.
So these numbers would be much more inflated by now.
No, not necessarily, because I think we're going to change scope. And our work with Populus, a couple of years ago, we talked about changing the scope of the work and the changes at Bob Brown to try to bring it into a number that I think was closer to 400 million, if I remember, and maybe even less than that. And so we would bring options forward. If the council said you wanted to go ahead and have a serious discussion and start to look at a timetable for Bob Brown, we would bring options from our project team for you to consider and what the impact would be then on possible revenue, not just for us, but economic benefit as well.
So again, that would only be for the Bob Brown Expo Hall?
Correct.
Not Century Two Round Building?
That's correct. Century Two Round Building, we are trying to make sure that that is in appropriate condition to be used by the community as it currently is today. And so that's why we, we're going to take care of continued investment in that building. But we can't do anything different, for instance, with the performing arts until, you know, we know what the future of a performing arts center is, which is mostly a private initiative at this point.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. My concern more than the convention space is the performing arts space specifically when it comes to Century Two. In addition, I noticed not in this CIP and it could be in this year's CIP, I just didn't know plans in terms of the old library repair. Is that currently projected for the end of 2024? Because it was not in what I could find in the 2025 CIP.
That, right now, is somewhat up in the air. We have two proposals that we have not reacted to yet regarding nonprofit use. Both of them expected that we would put money into the building, some request substantial and that's why this project is delayed or that process is delayed because we're not really quite sure how much investment we should make. There have been proposals to, to make it available for certain private uses, which we have not pursued, the city has not pursued at this point. And we've talked about possible other public uses. If we identified a public use for that building, then we would be required to make substantial improvements, which depending on how far you go, you could get close to the number that we were looking at when we decided not to invest in the building and to move to the new facility, which was almost a dollar-for-dollar offset. So anyway, there's, there's still a lot of work that has to go into the reuse of that building.
Just in terms of basic maintenance, we were there this week, I was, leaks in the roof were concerning to me, but it was just basic maintenance to make sure that we don't have to.
I do believe that we have contract, we have plans for the, that are already, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so that should be completed by 2024?
The roof should be taken care of.
End of 2024?
Yes.
Okay. Last question I have about CIP, because the mayor had directed us to talk about those. I saw $48 million for bike paths over the next 10 years projected in the CIP. Is that bike path separate from on-road bike paths or is this, you know, the Prairie Sunset Trail type of paths that are apart from the road systems?
It's, yeah.
So this is?
It is not on roads or is? It's not on roads.
So this is 48 million for non-road bike paths?
Primarily connecting existing paths to make a system that would take you from border to border. That's the goal over a long period of time.
So what would be the addition in terms of on-road bike paths would be adding?
Those are normally incorporated into our street projects.
There's probably like an added cost, I would imagine, with that though.
Well, but that's, we always, we're at the point now where we incorporate that into the cost of the project. So if you see a major arterial project or one that plans to have a path, that will be incorporated into that budget.
So 48 would probably be more for recreational usage of bikes if you're going from end into the community rather than transit?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, just since you said it, I am supportive of trying to figure out what to do with Bob Brown going forward. Being on the committee, I learned how important convention space was to our community, so I am supportive of that.
May I ask a couple more questions regarding the CIP? So I see ongoing projects that have already been budgeted for, I think they're in the design phase, including bridge work, is that correct?
Yes.
I see two bridge work items, one that's already completed, Amadon Bridge, Minnesota Bridge for D6 and then the canal crossing for District One.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to double check that those were.
Yes.
In regards to a previously asked question regarding the South Lakes, can we get an updated, just at least that sheet regarding the $6 million that now will be used for the multi-agency center? Any further questions for staff? I see none. Bob, do you want to give the second presentation before we open it up?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yes, I'd like to turn it over to Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager, to introduce you to a comprehensive initiative that frankly, I'm really proud of what staff has put together. It's about a $45 million initiative in 2025 to a deal with crime prevention and crime reduction, and involves more than just our police department, but a number of departments. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dante.
Good morning, Mayor Wu, members of the Wichita City Council, Assistant City Manager Dante Martin. As the manager mentioned, I've been working closely with staff for the last 60 days or so to identify programs and services that affect the crime rate. So kind of going back or rehashing what the manager mentioned earlier, the 2023 Community Survey identified cities' crime prevention efforts as being low quality and high importance. In response, the manager asked me to conduct a comprehensive review of programs and services provided by our departments. As we conducted that review, we wanted to make sure that the programs and services have an evidence-based impact on crime prevention and reduction. And in order for a program or service to be considered evidence-based, it must have a theoretical foundation that's supported by research. As the manager mentioned, there is a $45 million investment in these programs and services. Important to note, this isn't new money, this is money that's programmed in the budget, services we provide or have provided traditionally. The $45 million is made up of grant funds, general fund dollars, as well as special revenue funds, specifically liquor tax. I know we talk about liquor, a lot about liquor tax funding. The $45 million does not include funding for commissioned police officers. As the manager mentioned, staff did a really good, a lot of really good work and conducted a lot of research as it relates to evidence-based approaches to reducing crime. And through that work, we identified three pillars that this report is built on: prevention, intervention and enforcement, as well as rehabilitation. So the primary goal of prevention is to stop crime before it occurs. Intervention and enforcement seeks to intervene at the first sign of risk and respond effectively when crime occurs. And then lastly, rehabilitation recognizes that crime will occur and it seeks to address the underlying causes of crime. Provided these slides or the next two slides is foundational information about what we've seen in terms of five-year crime trends in Wichita. The FBI collects data about crime to measure the level and scope of crime occurring across the nation. The Wichita Police Department submits information monthly on the number of known offenses cleared by arrest or exceptional means, specifically Part I and Part II offenses. For this presentation, the focus is on Part I, violent and property crimes. Part I offenses include criminal homicide, rape, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, arson and human trafficking. In 2023, Part I violent crime decreased by 3% compared to 2022. The number of criminal shooting victims and homicides reported in 2023 is below the five-year average. However, the number of shooting victims in 2023 is about 14% higher than 2022 and there was an increase in criminal homicides reported in 2023 compared to 2022. The number of rape cases reported in 2023 is at a five-year low. I should mention that Captain Moses and Jeff Vale are here with me today and can do a further drill down on the crime data if you like. In regard to Part I property crime in 2023, property crime decreased by 2% compared to 2022. Shoplifting experienced an increase in 2023, was at a five-year high compared to 2022 and the five-year average. Part I property crime, burglary, theft, auto theft, decreases in 2023 compared to the average of five years, the shopping, the shoplifting increase in 2023. So Mayor, as the manager mentioned, this was truly a team effort and with your permission, I'd like to invite staff to come to the podium and highlight some of the programs and services that we offer as an organization. So Jamie Nix, Troy Hauptman, Sally Stain, Captain Moses, as well as Nathan Emery are prepared to present the next few slides and answer questions.
This was truly a fascinating and important way of looking at library services. Three areas of emphasis and programming that we have historically provided for Wichitaans center around digital equity, family engagement and providing a third place. A lot of research shows that digital literacy is a real factor in crime rates as it relates to. A lot of research shows that digital literacy is a real factor in crime rates as it relates to overall education. Public computing services at the library are meeting these digital needs by providing free access across our locations. In 2023, the use of library digital access equated to $1.13 million in value to residents. Our portfolio includes education and leadership for digital access that relates to public computing, Wi-Fi hotspots that circulated about 1,100 times last year to homes that don't have technology in the home. We have training classes. Our book librarian service is an incredible one-to-one mentoring and educational opportunity that served over 3,187 individuals last year. We also provide public printing, faxing, copying to help people navigate information, needs, and communications. Our databases and collection support include LinkedIn Learning, which is a 24/7 educational tool to bolster workplace technology skills. In addition, we have a partnership with the school district that's offering student e-card so that all of our online resources are available even at registration. That's coming up in September, or actually August. Our book bus as well has a mobile hotspot to allow 15 individuals to connect to it wherever we're out in the community. Related to digital equity, we have a lot of leadership that's underway right now. We hosted our first Digital Equity Summit, which is gathering a lot of energy related to coalition building and cooperation to build out a larger digital equity and digital navigation program. We've just installed three Wi-Fi-enabled benches in key areas of the city with plans to install nine more by the end of next year and expand our Wi-Fi intentionally outside of our building so that at any point, anyone 24/7 at library grounds would be able to have access. We're updating a lot of our efforts related to early learning to fully embrace family engagement, understanding that parents can be their first, their child's first and best teacher. Less than half of children who live in poverty are ready for preschool nationally. If we look at that here in Wichita, there are close to 18,000 students or potential students who are likely to struggle in kindergarten. Our family engagement efforts are a matter of equity in that low-income families often don't have the types of supplies, activities, and time, and even the transportation that prevents them from coming to a library facility. One pilot program that we have going on right now is, we have 150 book bundles that are being distributed through into homes with partnership with Rainbows United. We're getting some really good feedback from them. We learned that one little girl who's receiving some intervention services really loved a book called Peekaboo. Her parents bought it for her second birthday. The word "boo" was her first word that she spoke. And so we're seeing that language development skills and access to materials is a really big gap that continues to need to be filled. Based on research about the importance of early brain development, Family Place is a program that we've instituted at our advanced learning library with hopes to invest and certify all of our libraries as Family Place. It supports the essential roles of parents and addresses physical, social, emotional, and cognitive aspects of child development. And really, this is just a space and a place, low-risk, informal education that can benefit generations going forward. In addition, I've talked about this before as far as your public library really being one of the last places in the city where you can go and stay all day without the expectation of spending money. We know that we're open over 17,000 hours annually at seven locations across the city. Youth are using us regularly. Having a safe place with activities or just exposure to a place where you aren't needing to worry about your health and safety is critical. In 2022, we simultaneously planned and implemented outreach services to reach residents who aren't coming to the library at this point, and we're also working to improve our customer experience. A lot of people don't find themselves welcome or even interested in a library. Your library is more than books. Now it's a safe space as well. We have a new program that's introduced library resource officers to support safety and public space management across all seven locations, which is building confidence in our staff to be able to help navigate the number of challenges that occur in a public space related to people's personal health, safety, well-being, and the safety of everyone who's using the library. These are just the top of the iceberg of what the library is doing and has been doing for a number of years. Pass it over to Troy.
So I never pass up an opportunity to talk about parks and recreation. So we service all over the city. Every single corner, every single square inch of the city, we have opportunities for parks and recreation to have an impact on this community. Really has an impact in regards to quality of life and quality of place, which in turn really has an impact on reduction of crime. So a couple of quick highlights that I just wanted to share with you all, and I'll also talk a little bit about the three items that's on the PowerPoint. Parks and Recreation activities are a major resource in child development, child education, and development of character and morals. One of the things we always talk about is parks and recreation is the long term. It's the impact of a community that, it's not the silver bullet, it's not the immediate action of occurring crime, but it's a long-term activity of quality of place and quality of life that really has that impact. And so giving these opportunities to children to grow and learn really has that impact. Parks and Recreation is a central public service. It's been well documented in regards to communities that have a strong Parks and Recreation Department have lower crime rates. It's one of my favorite statistics to talk about. Several examples of teaching in our programs, I'm going to mention two of them. We have a boxing program, and we partner with First T in regards to teaching youth golf. So it's not just about teaching the sport, but it's also teaching the leadership that's within it. It's also regards to sportsmanship. These are all things that are involving building and taking care of character and morals for children. Another item is providing a safe and productive environment, which gives children opportunities to grow, learn, and mature. So having these recreation centers, having our swimming pools, having our parks in locations where that they have access to them, but also opportunities for them to enjoy it with their families, gives them a safe space to continue to grow and learn. Our Parks and Recreation activities have a huge impact in regards to health and wellness, which in turns reduces hospital visits, has an impact on long-term health and wellness within the community, which also reduces healthcare costs. Couple other items I want to point out is, we have tons of partnerships. We don't do this by ourselves. And so a great example is recently with 259, which I'll talk a little bit about with the football program. But another partnership was with the Police and Fire Department. We hosted them at OJ Watson for a camp that they helped lead, but it was at one of our facilities where we helped organize it and the process with all the logistics to go with that as well. So research shows that after-school programs can reduce crime by offering constructive alternatives to gangs and drugs during peak hours of juvenile crime. We see this every year. Right after school lets out, we see higher graffiti. We see more impacts in regards to vandalism, and it's because these kids have nothing to do. And so having opportunities for them to go to camps, having them opportunities to be involved with sports takes up some of that time. That's why Colvin, the before-and-after-school program, is so successful and popular. It's always full. We've always had, all of our camps have always been full. We've actually turned people away quite often. So we, one of the things that we're looking at is expanding those programs. There's a need to expand and meet those needs in the community, and more focused programs that are strategic and encompass those that are at more risk. So there's often opportunities for lower-income children to be involved, but we just have not been able to make that connection to get them really into all of our programs. That's one that we can expand on. Recreation classes, it's a great benefit on a lot of different levels, but it reduces stress, it provides knowledge, a sense of belonging, has an economic impact, and these are some of the things that people don't think about what Parks and Recreation actually does. We actually have a huge impact, Parks and Recre, I mean, I'm sorry, economic impact. However, recreation classes, and one of the underlying benefits is it brings families together and has an impact on health and well-being. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our youth football as one example of many, many other sports programs that we have. We are doing a great, we're moving forward with a great opportunity with 259, partnering with them in regards to our youth football program. It's going to expand opportunities for all kinds of folks, all kinds of kids to play football. So sports programs has an impact in each one of the players in regards to having exposure to mentors, provides exercise, teaches them teamwork, a sense of community, develops respect, builds character, empathy, and social skills. So those are some of the things that we focus on when we're working on our youth sports. It goes way beyond that. This is just the tip of the iceberg of all the things that we do, but just about everything that we do in Parks and Recreation has an impact in reducing crime across the community. But developing a sense of community is really, really important, and I think that's, just having the pride of having a great Parks and Recreation Department has that type of impact. So again, one thing I just wanted to emphasize is Parks and Recreation, it's not a silver bullet, it's not a one-time effort, but it's a long-time sustained effort to improve the quality of life and quality of place, which reduces crime. So when we're looking at our future and the vision that we're looking at, it's not tomorrow, it's not next year, but what's the Parks and Recreation Department going to do in the next 10, 15, 20 years? Because we're building lives now. We're having an impact on children now, and they're going to have that impact carry with them for 20, 25 years. So that was my spiel, and I'll pass it on to Sally.
Well, good morning. Thank you so much for hearing us out on this. As Dante mentioned, you know, this is evidence-based. There are studies from all across the country. UC Irvine, the Furman Center at NYU, University of Minnesota, as well as the American Journal for Public Health, all say affordable housing, community development, and community services all reduce crime in communities. The Brennan Center for Justice specifically states, "One of the best ways to prevent crime is to provide more resources and support to low-income communities." But you can imagine, that is the heart of everything we do in the Housing Department. From providing rent assistance for low-income renters, to down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers, to reducing blight through home repair as well as the removal of unsafe structures. We have programs that not only work to make housing more affordable, but work to build up families, to provide individual and family development, connect families to education opportunities, to job training, to build up family wealth. That is ingrained in more than three dozen programs that we administer through the Housing Department. I sat and tried to connect, is there one program we run that I cannot connect here, and I couldn't come up with one? Right? We are working every single day to try and fill the needs of people in our community, which can definitely, and proven, that it can help to reduce crime. But there aren't enough resources, and so we are always going out and striving to find more resources, more creative ways to do what it is we do every day, so that we can have more impact for more families. And so that rolls into specifically to Project Hope. So Project Hope, HOPE actually stands for homeless outreach with, through proactive engagement. This was an effort with, of the Housing Department partnered with WPD and Newman University, and we were looking for more resources. And we said, how about we apply for this Department of Justice grant? And I laughed the day I hit submit, and I said, wow, DOJ is going to laugh when they see this application coming from the Housing Department in Wichita for a grant. And it has really, really embedded us to collab, more collaboration and communication with WPD. And it is a place-based, data-driven, community-oriented effort to address crime in a specific target area. So under the grant, it is a Burn Criminal Justice Innovation Grant. We were required to identify a target area of less than two square miles that had a significant crime issue. And working with WPD's crime analyst at the time, we identified, really it's the Broadway Corridor. Our target area runs 10th down to Kellogg, Waco to Washington. It's about a one and a half square miles. And we identified that we had more crimes related to homelessness in that area, three times as many crimes in that area as there were to adjacent areas. And we applied to DOJ in 2020. And to our astonishment, we were awarded. Now, we had some slowdowns related to COVID. It is community-based. We had a hard time pulling the community together in 2021, right, due to COVID. So we've had some extension from DOJ. And DOJ approved our site action plan in January of 2023. And through the grant, we have actually, aside from our Neighbor Resource Fairs that you see monthly going on, where we are trying to connect resources to people who need them, the byproduct of that was bringing providers together who are now collaborating in ways we'd never seen before. But we're deploying what we call care coordination teams that go out and try, make connections with people experiencing homelessness in our target area and connect them to resources and housing. And we're looking at this from both the macro level and the micro level, and we're working with WPD. We meet with them, we do deep dives into hotspots. We are identifying where crime has happened in the last month, and then we come together and say, how do we launch resources to address that uptick in crime? Is it, do we, do we need more of a WPD presence? Do we need more of the case workers and outreach workers going out? Can we simply have a conversation with that location and say, what can you do to change what's happening at your site so we can try and dissolve this hotspot? It has been very, very enlightening. We got to hire staff in March of 2023 that started to go out in teams, not just a caseworker as a team, it's a caseworker with a social work intern student from WSU and Newman, as well as a peer support worker, somebody who's actually has lived experience with homelessness, going out and connecting with people inside the target area and connecting them to housing. Since that time, we've housed 45 people. And it is a matter of people being willing to engage. And since we've started this, we've only had one lose their housing assistance. So we are seeing great strides in the success of using the team model. But as I said, you know, we're looking at this at both the macro level, and we are watching the macro-level crime statistics. It's just now, as we're hitting people who've been housed for a year, where we'll be going back, collaborating with WPD, and our data partners at Newman University are evaluating what the impact is for those who've been housed. How many interactions with law enforcement did they have prior to coming onto the program? And how many have they had since being housed? And we're going to be able to use that data to help us strategize and pull together resources to have much more effective of a program going forward. Now, we are, currently have an extension request in with the DOJ, and they've told us verbally that they're willing to extend us through 2025. But, you know, we have hopes and goals that this will help us also create those relationships, not just with WPD, not just with Newman, but with community, with the residents, with the businesses in our target area, so that we can continue the great work that they're doing. So when we couple programs like that, where we're constantly going out, looking for new resources and learning from what we're doing, we know we're looking for that next thing and the thing after that. And one thing I can say, Project Hope has garnered national attention. We have been, Officer Nate Sweetall and I have been asked by the International Association of Chiefs of Police to come to their national conference in October to talk specifically about this unique way that we can come together as a community to address a challenge that many communities are facing now. So I stand for any questions you may have.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate the time, and Assistant City Manager Martin, thank you for putting all this together. I'm Captain Aaron Moses from the Wichita Police Department. I'm the executive officer for the Wichita Police Department. And I'll touch on a lot of our efforts, which of course are just some of them. A lot of, all of the work we do is related to crime prevention and do is related to crime prevention and crime reduction. I'll start by framing our goals set forth by Chief Joe Sullivan, because I think that's important to understanding the efforts that we deploy. Chief Sullivan set out three main goals for the Wichita Police Department, which are to reduce violent crime, increase community engagement, and leverage technology. You can sort of replace data-driven policing, implement best practices and community engagement with those three main goals, and see how these initiatives I'm going to discuss today fit into those overall objectives. First, we'll discuss the Real-Time Information Center, which we've heard a lot about. In November of 2023, the Wichita City Council approved receipt of federal grant funding to develop and implement a Real-Time Information Center. This is something that some city council members have had the opportunity to experience in other major cities across the country, others that are planning trips to go see that as well. This is something that's very exciting for our community, and it allows us to use technology to our benefit, and this would fall under the main goal of leveraging technology. We've identified a location here at City Hall to remodel into the Real-Time Information Center. It will be used for comp stat, and then eventually, to continue this collaboration between city departments, we envisioned a city stat model, where we would engage all of city government related to crime trends that we're seeing and how we can address those together. This allows a data-driven approach to crime prevention. The information center will be a central location for all enhanced technology at the Wichita Police Department, including the enhanced body worn cameras, which are currently being issued to our officers, automated license plate readers, gunshot detection software, surveillance cameras, drones, and other available technologies. As Assistant City Manager Martin indicated, we had to review whether this was data-driven and supported by research. One article in the Journal of Criminal Justice found that, on average, real-time information centers were associated with a 5% increase in clearance rates for violent crime, a 12% increase in clearance rates for property crime, and an 11% increase in clearance rates overall. Increased clearance rates are a budget performance measure identified for the Wichita Police Department through the City of Wichita. Again, as I indicated, other large municipalities also use real-time information centers to handle calls for service, which keeps police officers available for other activities, and we've seen in other communities where it can scale an appropriate response. One example we've seen was in Oklahoma City, where they have a real-time information center. Officers were dispatched to a critical injury accident, where someone was run over by a vehicle. The real-time information center was able to access cameras in that area and identify that there was not an injury accident in that area. In fact, there were just people walking through the street. They were able to scale down that response, keep officers, firefighters, paramedics available for other emergencies. The next thing we'll discuss is our crime analyst positions. Again, this falls under leveraging technology and reducing violent crime. Crime analysts are responsible for translating crime data into actionable products. Jeff Vale behind me is the director of our crime analysis section, and he oversees this effort for the Wichita Police Department. Crime analysts have the specific aim of assisting in guiding patrols and the allocation of police resources, and I'll touch on this when I touch about violent crime reduction strategies. Analysts produce timelines for major crime, compute statistics on crime trends for community meetings, and act as a liaison between the Police Department and other law enforcement partners. Again, according to research, police departments that applied preventative measures based on analytical data were able to significantly reduce crime in specified areas. That comes out of a study in the Chicago area. Multiple Wichita Police Crime Analysts have been honored on the national level for their work on crime analysis in Wichita. And as Director Stang spoke, our crime analysts are incredibly important for those relationships between other city departments. We oftentimes will assign a crime analyst to work on a project like Project Hope, to provide data directly to the research, to the team for housing, for Project Hope specifically for housing and the Wichita Police Department and the researcher, to make sure that we're meeting the goals of that project. I'll next talk about the Violent Crime Reduction Strategy. This falls under the overall goal of reducing violent crime. We are in the process of implementing risk terrain modeling. Again, that's an effort by our crime analysis section. Risk terrain modeling is a different way to look at crime and why crime occurs in certain areas. It layers risk factors related to crime. And instead of us simply saying, "We have a robbery hotspot in this area," we're now able to go, we will be able to go a step further and say, "There's a robbery hotspot in this area, and there's an abandoned structure here, and there's a high-risk business here, and there are other factors that may indicate why that area is a hotspot for robbery, not just that robberies are occurring." That allows us to engage all of the partners behind us and everybody else in city government to leverage that technology and address those concerns in the community. Again, this is research-based. There are other large municipalities using hotspot policing or risk terrain modeling, which can also be translated into problem-oriented policing. The Dallas Police Department is one, and the Salt Lake City Police Department is another, that we've looked at related to their efforts on hotspot policing, and they've seen positive results. Again, using this RTM data, we intend to engage all of city government in a city stat model to really address issues and crime trends holistically in our community. We know that oftentimes, police are not the right answer to the problems being seen and to the root cause of crime, but we also know that we can engage our partners with the library, and our partners with Parks and Recreation, our partners with housing, and others, to address those issues. The Violent Crime Reduction Strategy is a two-pronged strategy. The second prong is the top offender or top involved model. Again, this was, this was based on data and research. It's similar to a model used by the Milwaukee Police Department, where they have seen a significant reduction in crime. And this model is used by our crime analysts to identify people who are likely to be involved in specific types of crime. Initially, we're going to be looking at gun crime, as it is a top concern for our community. Next, I'll discuss community service officers. These are non-commissioned employees that work out in the field. This would relate back to the primary goals of increasing community engagement and reducing violent crime. And I'll also discuss why this is important when I discuss the Axon My 90 citizen survey and some of the results that we've seen. Community service officers respond to non-emergency calls for service, where a commissioned officer response may not be necessary. This can include car accidents, it can include collecting evidence from a previously reported crime, things like that, where we don't need to send a fully-commissioned police officer to go handle these calls for service. And what that does is it allows that commissioned police officer to be available for an emergency, a priority call for service. We have studied staffing here at the Wichita Police Department in the past, and in 2017, sort of a best practice of 40% of proactive police time was identified. In 2016, overall police proactivity in the City of Wichita was at 32.2%. We believe in addition of these community service officers will allow us to provide more time to officers to proactive policing, which of course, we believe will have, will lead to increasing community engagement, because those commissioned officers will have more time to make those relationships in the community, and it will also lead to reduction in violent crime. Next, I'll discuss the Axon My 90 survey. This is under the overall objective of increasing community engagement. Understanding the needs to address community concerns in a data-driven way, the Wichita Police Department partnered with Axon Enterprises to implement an ongoing citizen survey. Individuals who call 911 are later contacted to provide feedback about the service they received from the Wichita Police Department. Since that survey began, we've received over 2,500 responses. 83% of people who responded felt they received the help that they needed from the Wichita Police Department. 87% of respondents felt they were treated with respect, and 83% felt they were treated fairly. To go on and help explain some of the other initiatives I've already discussed, respondents are also asked what Wichita Police Department could do to improve their safety or feeling of safety. The top three answers are as follows. 47% said they would like to see increased patrol car visibility. 21% desire increased community engagement, and 14% desire increased agency staffing. We're attempting to address those concerns by many of the things that I've already discussed. Finally, I'll discuss door-to-door campaigns. This also falls under increased community engagement. This is the traditional mode of police interacting with the community. Specifically, Chief Sullivan set out the overall goal of increasing community engagement, and instructed all of our bureau commanders, our captains, to develop their own goals for their bureau. One specific bureau that engaged door-to-door campaigns was the Patrol South Bureau. They identified that there had not been a neighborhood association, sorry, that's the word I was looking for, neighborhood association in a specific beat of the city for some time. And they used door-to-door campaigns to go out and talk to people in their homes, and encourage them to engage with their fellow citizens in their neighborhood to come together and create a neighborhood, and recreate a neighborhood association. We've also been involved in re-engaging some neighborhood associations on the north side of town. The El Pueblo Neighborhood Association, for example, is another one that we've been involved in re-engaging. We also use door-to-door campaigns in a style called, in a process called Impact Meetings. I'm sure some of you are familiar with that. But when we do have an incident of violent crime that occurs in a community, we go out, a few days later, we have an impact meeting in that community. We knock door-to-door to bring people out to talk about what happened, and to solicit information from people who may not have come forward already. In fact, in a recent crime, we identified two witnesses through an impact meeting that had not already spoken with police, simply by going out and knocking on doors in a traditional door-to-door style of engaging with our community. So I appreciate the time. I'm sure you'll have questions at the end.
Good morning. When all you have is a hammer, every issue looks like a nail. And I'm very thankful that the court has a lot more tools than its hammer. Most people think of jail and costs and fines as the tools of the court, but we have a lot more in our toolbag to help work with individuals as individuals on their issues. All that starts with assessing risks and needs. And to do that, we use a Risk Needs Tool called the LSIR. It's an evidence-based tool that helps us allocate our resources to meet the needs of individual probationers coming through our system, identify what they need to be successful, to not recidivate. And it's also a tool that we use to help us identify if our programs are successful. So an example would be, and we'll talk about the Day Reporting Center in a moment, folks take our Risk Needs Tool, we identify the risks that they pose and what they need to be successful, but we also give that to them again at the end, and are able, through that tool, to identify how successful they've been in the program, and identify an actual measurable reduction in risk for that individual. We also seek to intervene skillfully. We do that through our treatment courts, our problem-solving courts. We were one of the first drug courts in the country. That provides a non-traditional therapeutic approach to criminal offenders who are substance abusers. Now, the folks who come through our program are not all there, in fact, most of them are not there because they were charged with a substance abuse crime, possession of something. They come because there is an underlying issue that they need help with, that created or helped create their interaction with the police and interaction with the court. That could come out of our criminal courts, that could come out of our domestic violence court. And that allows us to, this court allows us to provide a non-adversarial approach to encourage and promote substance-free behavior. The program's a minimum of one year, and it includes intensive treatment, regular court appearances, random drug testing, education, counseling. And the primary mission is to rehabilitate the participant through intensive drug treatment, drug and alcohol treatment, accountability, responsibility are critical components of the program. Beyond actually rehabilitating offenders, I've seen in recent surveys, participants thanking the court, thanking the judge for saving their lives. So it goes even beyond rehabilitation. It actually saves lives. We also have Mental Health Court, and that's also a specialized docket that is non-adversarial, where teams work collaboratively to provide services to those who go through our court who have mental illness. They have different needs, and through that court, we're able to connect them with resources, case managers, and a variety of other things to make sure and help them be successful and come out of the program and not recidivate. Once again, those cases come off of all of our dockets, and it's, it is a way to make sure that these people are receiving treatment that is right for them, right for them as individuals. And then we've got a lot of collaboration within the court. Our liquor tax treatment services include the Day Reporting Center. We utilize the Day Reporting Center to reduce our jail footprint and provide people resident, non-residential wraparound services to our highest-risk people. Day reporting doesn't mean that it's just open every day. People who are involved in this program literally go to the facility every weekday, and so it is very intense. It provides, it provides substance abuse treatment, education by licensed addiction counselors. It provides better intervention program services. And as of this year, it also provides resources for co-occurring disorders. So folks who have both substance abuse issues and mental health issues can receive excellent treatment through this program, and that's been an area where the Day Reporting Program has struggled to provide them those, to provide them resources, and now, now they are. We also, through liquor tax funds, fund a variety of prevention and treatment programs. We, the Liquor Tax Coalition meets to identify organizations that would benefit from grants, and then also monitors the progress and success of those programs in delivering services to our community. In addition to those prevention and treatment programs, it also funds the Continuum of Care, which is a program utilized by the municipal court to screen people in the jail for what they need from a substance abuse treatment standpoint. It provides case management. It provides inpatient treatment, followed by outpatient treatment. And so it is a truly invaluable resource to restoring those people who are suffering from substance abuse problems. Finally, we've got the Wichita Intervention Program. That is a program for first-time DUI offenders, where, under our ordinance, people have to spend 48 hours in custody if they've been convicted of a first-time DUI. Well, instead of spending that in the county jail and receiving no services, this program allows people to spend it at a hotel, where they receive training and treatment from a licensed addiction counselor while under the supervision of the City of Wichita. It's an excellent program that has very successfully reduced recidivism among these first-time offenders. And it's a program that we not only provide to our own court, but we do provide that service to courts around our community. We've kept the prices very low in that, to make it accessible to people. We have had our first price increase, which is a nominal increase of $50, in more than a decade. And so we remain revenue-neutral and very fiscally conservative in that program to make sure that people can get that treatment. So to sum up, I'm so pleased that we are not simply using the hammer of fees, fines, costs, and jail, but we are looking at people as individuals to help reduce crime in our community and rehabilitate the people coming through our court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's truly my
It's truly my pleasure to have the opportunity to work with staff on this project. The report you have, I believe, is roughly 15, 16 pages, and we could be here the rest of the day if we went to depth on each program and service that's listed in that report. If you have any questions as far as the research that's been done, the programs that we didn't highlight today, feel free to contact me or shoot me an email, and staff and I will come down and answer any questions you have. With that being said, I'll stand for questions relative to this presentation, or turn it back over to the manager.
Thank you, Dante, and thank you to all of the speakers who came forward today. We have a list of council members that want to speak, beginning with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have a question. I just wanted to say excellent work on that to everyone. Great presentations, great work happening, and I'm glad that the public gets to see the work that's happening and looking forward to supporting this. But again, excellent presentation.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say the same thing. It's nice to see all of the different departments collaborating and making a community effort to reduce the crime in our community. So, I just wanted to say thank you to all the different departments and people that helped make this happen.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo my colleague's comments here. I did have one question. If we go back to Slides 61 and 62, please. And this might not be something you can answer off the top of your head, but are these crime trends? Are they unique to us, or is this kind of a reflection of the national trends as well right now?
Nationally, everybody saw a spike in 2020, and we've all, not everybody has fallen back down, but we continue to see a downward trend. Just earlier this week, we were able to get our Part 1 violent crime statistics back into the good range after we lost some RMS access, but we're seeing an overall 4% decrease in violent, Part 1 violent crime compared to the five-year average year-to-date for 2024. So, we've continued to see this trend for 2024.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And Bob, thank you for bringing this format to us. I think it's really important for us to see, and I'm just going to pile on a little bit more. I see Jamie had to leave, but when it comes to libraries, I've said often, one of the reasons that I'm such a huge champion for not only childcare but literacy is the number one predictor of adult health is third-grade literacy. The number one predictor of adult incarceration is third-grade literacy. So, the more that we can do to give people, especially kiddos, spaces so that they can be safe, but also spaces where they can learn, really does help improve outcomes. As far as park and rec, I used to be at the Greater Wichita YMCA. We had the middle school after-school program, just like the programs here at the city. It literally just gives kids, again, a place to go and to be able to not get involved in crime. So, it truly is crime prevention at the essence. And then Sally, you're always just such a thought leader. Thank you. I always say about housing, housing is first things first, right? If you don't have a home, you can't probably get a job, and you probably can't go to school, and you can't practice your faith, and you can't have as many family and friend engagements, all the things we need people to do so that they don't get into crime, substance abuse, et cetera. And then, as far as courts, Nathan, I always love how you say, "skillfully intervene." I think that's exactly what you do, when you are giving people a second chance, which is vital, so that they don't re-enter into the programs. And then Wichita Police Department. I come from a law enforcement family. I've said this all the time. I'm kind of a traditionalist when it comes to policing. I love the fact that we have boots on the ground, we have community policing, we have our investigation department, but I love the fact that you're embracing technology and new ways to do your job better, and then also embracing the other departments that you can also, you know, engage with. When it comes to crime prevention, if we're going to stick the landing with the Olympics coming up, we have to use all of the resources and the mechanisms that we can to be successful. So, just thank you to everyone who is here today to present, and I know all of the other departments in the city also would have something to contribute. So, thank you.
I have multiple questions. First, I'll start off by saying thank you very much for the five specific areas where we looked at crime reduction and crime prevention. So, $45 million is, from our budget, is dedicated in some way to crime prevention. So, I'll start off with this graph since we have this up already. I'd like Slide number 62, rather, property crime. I would like to see a 10-year crime trend as a staff-recommended action in conjunction with how much expenditure and investment we have made in libraries, parks, those two specific areas. So, that's one staff-recommended action. I'd like to see, over time, that investment and how that coordinates with those two specific areas, which are city departments. In addition to, this is more of a comment, I love the department collaborations, but I encourage more community collaboration. I believe that there are only so many finite dollars in local government, and I know that there are lots of nonprofit organizations and organizations outside of the walls of City Hall that also do some really great work towards crime prevention, and I really appreciate when I see collaborative efforts like Parks making that announcement last week with USD 259. But I'll also chime in with what Councilmember Tuttle mentioned with YMCA. So, one of the CIP items is a master plan regarding parks. We currently have 144 parks in our system, and so I'd like to see one of those items, as I was looking at the CIP. It said that the master plan would be for enhancements and expansion. I also would like to challenge a reduction in the number of parks so that we can be much more focused, maybe, on some parks and make greater investments towards parks that more people can get attracted to. So, I'm going to make a challenge to the CIP to not just think about expansions and enhancements, but also maybe focused number of parks. I really appreciate Councilmember Tuttle in speaking about third-grade levels of literacy. I came to the United States when I was a second grader, almost third grade, and I do understand how important it is to have access to literacy opportunities. I was at the Wichita Public Library in South Wichita when I grew up, and I really appreciated that there was an opportunity for me to learn outside of USD 259 classrooms. So, I do understand the importance of libraries, but I'd also like to challenge and ask if we can look at how libraries, if we're focusing more on early childhood, because that's third-grade levels and before that, how we can utilize maybe recs at a later time, because I know we talk about youth, and not all youth are at our public libraries, but rather, they're looking for activities after school. And I think I challenged that question also during one of the town halls regarding crime prevention, how we can look at our rec centers, maybe instead of opening earlier, opening later, staying open later, because our youth are looking for an alternative in the evening time, whereas libraries, we see a lot of young people, little kids under the age of 10, that are looking for those types of spaces in libraries. So, maybe that's a staff-recommended, I just would like a study regarding how we can better utilize those two assets to address under 12 and then over 12. And then I just, again, want to encourage us to keep reminding ourselves that our houseless neighbors are just as important in our community, and so I really appreciate what Sally is doing. As a council, we've made a concerted effort towards a multi-agency navigation center, and we see that as a true focal point in trying to center a lot of our energy so that we all, not just the city of Wichita, but the faith community, nonprofit organizations, the business community, can all center their efforts towards one location. And I know that Sally's going to speak about another new business item in just a little bit, but I wanted to make sure that that was said at this moment in time, because we did not have that as one of the questions in our community-wide survey, but we have been hearing from our community. And so, I appreciate that when we talk about housing and that that is the number-one thing, that the success of an individual is having a roof over their heads plays into crime prevention and all the ailments and challenges that we may have. So, thank you again to Sally and her team, and I really appreciate the Project Hope team. I'd like to get that same report that you will provide in October to the Association of Major Chiefs to present to us as well, because I think that that would be helpful for her community to see all the efforts that we're already focusing on and the results of that study. I see no further questions regarding the crime prevention portion. I will have one more question, and that is regarding the CIP before we open it up for public comment, and that is the ice rink. In January, we will have the U.S. Olympics Championships coming to Wichita, and I saw that there was, one of the tiered option considerations is a reduction in that subsidy. So, I'd like to know what we're doing between now and January before an entire nation comes to our city, that we're really putting our best foot forward for these national-level skaters who will one day compete in the Olympics.
In terms of the improvements, we have ongoing improvements that are being made in conjunction with rink management. I'm not quite sure in terms of specific projects that they're going to undertake in advance of the Nationals, and practice sessions will be held at the ice rink. Projections that are in the budget come not just from staff, but from rink management, and I believe Councilmember Johnson asked about that when they gave an update, an annual update, on their operations, and that they have targeted, over time, to actually get into a surplus, not a deficit, position, and that is by driving through marketing and improved facilities, driving more people into the ice facility. So, our numbers are based on, primarily on data that we're getting from them regarding their ability to drive more people into the facility. I can, if council wants, I can get a report on what they're going to do in advance.
I know that there will be opportunities for people to watch these practices, so that means our rink will be looked at, whether on a national level or not, so there are opportunities for revenue in terms of advertising and sales. I'd like to know what is being done about that. In addition to, there's a big space in the ice rink that is not being utilized at this time. What type of revenue opportunities are there in the meantime, while U.S. figure skating will be in town? I just would like to see maybe some ideas on how to increase some revenue on a facility, too.
Before Troy speaks, I indicated during one of the workshops that we've been working with a consulting firm on sponsorships and naming rights. We're making arrangements for them to come to the city to visit with you, each of you, to talk about that report. Obviously, there's some proprietary information in terms of their marketing approach, but I'd like to share that with you so you understand the opportunities they see, specifically in this case, at the ice rink, for exactly what you're saying, Mayor. And it's important that their initiatives start soon in order to be able to sell that space.
So, we've been working with Rink Management Services in regards to incremental improvements. Over the past two years, they've made a lot of different improvements, which includes adding new scoreboards, new netting, cleaning, a higher level of cleaning, a higher level of actually painting the walls, removing some of the scuff marks. So, they've actually made a huge impact in regards to some of the low-hanging fruit that they can take care of. We have met as a committee, there's been several folks that we've met in regards to the open space that you talked about, the old fitness area, and we've come up with a couple of different ideas. I think we kind of lost a little bit of steam, but I'm hoping that we will get together as a committee, and these are some of the stakeholders in the community that might have some great ideas. We talked a little bit about what's happening that's really successful out in the golf course, are simulators. And so, there's all kinds of different simulators in regards to golf simulators, airplane simulators, just all kinds of fun stuff that can happen in that space. Would require a little bit of investment, would require some type of partnership, but there are some ideas that are generating in regards to how to use that space. It is a difficult space to rent out for a lot of different reasons, but there are some folks that are interested in seeing some additional revenue going through there. Also, in regards to working with Public Works, they've made substantial improvements in regards to the mechanical aspects of the ice rink, and that is one reason, that's probably one of the main reasons, why we were able to host this activity in January. They saw the commitment that we were making in regards to our ice rink, that we're going to have two sheets of ice available for them, that we made that commitment and that investment to make that happen. USA Figure Skating saw that. I've met with them several times, and they were very excited to come back to Wichita because they know that we're making that commitment and that investment in the ice rink. So, we've done a lot in regards to mechanical, we've done a lot in regards to the low-hanging fruit. There's still a lot more things we can do with Rink Management Services, but I think we have a good partner there, and as we go up the tree, it gets a little bit tougher and tougher, but there's momentum.
Thank you. My only challenge would be to start thinking about some revenue-generating activities as well. I know that we have lots of wonderful local businesses that would be a great opportunity to showcase them and sell product. They're in Kansas, they love Kansas, they want to experience it. So, it's just a challenge in terms of thinking about things that could be revenue-generating. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I think everyone knows I'm a huge advocate for walking and biking, and so when I heard a comment from Councilmember Glasscock about $48 million for bicycle facilities, I was a little surprised, but maybe a little shocked, so I kind of looked a little bit through the CIP on page 29, and I think maybe we need to make a clarification just so the community understands, because I'm pretty sure my phone's going to start blowing up with people being super excited that we're going to spend a whole lot of money on biking paths. Could I ask Paul or Gary to come forth and maybe just explain a little bit so we can manage people's expectations, probably both ways, for the good and the bad? Thank you.
Good morning again. Yes, I think when that $48 million maybe was brought up, that does include some other items, other than bicycle paths. It does include traffic signalization of $12 million throughout the 10-year CIP, and that is for us to signalize intersections that might meet warrants. We also have the sidewalk maintenance funding included within that, and that is to repair sidewalks in which we get residents' call-in and complain about trip hazards. We have the arterial sidewalk program in there as well for $750,000 per year to construct new arterial sidewalk along corridors that do not have sidewalk already. And there's a few other line items in there with the bike pad multimodal access. That includes funding, I think, $150,000 every other year to work with our maintenance folks, crews, to, if it does make sense, and the current bicycle plan and/or the future bicycle plan indicates right-sizing a four-lane roadway to a three-lane roadway with on-street bike lanes. We can use some of that for striping. So, there are a number of other items within that $48 million. The true bicycle improvement number, I believe, is $6.8 million, and that is funded in 2029, 2031, and 2033, and we utilize that funding to seek additional funding through WAMPO for bike improvement projects.
And Paul, could I just ask a follow-up question, then? We are in the process, we're going to be revitalizing our master bicycle plan. Will that, I'm assuming it will, but I'm kind of asking a rhetorical question, but I would just like to hear a little bit more. The CIP will be in align with what we determined in the new bicycle plan?
Yes, that plan is to be completed this fall, the update to the plan. We have received some initial projects or priority routes from the, from tool design firm that were based on the public input that we received from open houses and pop-up events, as well as equity, safety, and connectivity to existing paths. So, I will be bringing that to the council probably sometime in November with that update.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question, just for Councilman Tuttle, what page did you say the line item was on? 29, okay, thank you.
It's on page 29 under Policy Issues, it's Funding for Multimodal Investments.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Mayor, my question's for Bob. When the mayor is giving directing staff to look into things, I just want to make sure that that's not necessarily the direction of the council. So I just want to make sure when she's talking about potentially cutting parks and different things like that, I don't agree with that, so I just want to make sure when she's giving you direction to look into things that that's not taken as the direction of the council.
I understand that, I mean, many of the requests that have been made have been made by individual council members, I think, to feed the budget review process, so I didn't, I don't know that many or any of these, I've determined are directives today that are council policies.
I just want to make that clear to the public as well, that this is the first time that I've heard that potential suggestion, so I just want to make sure that that's not the idea that that's maybe, I mean, it could be for some of us, but it's not for me, so I just want to make sure that the public knows that.
Well, and it's a good point because this is one of those projects where the RFP should come to the council before we go out for proposals so that we know what the intent of the council is in the updated master plan. It would be good to get some direction before we solicit a consultant.
Because I take a lot of pride in my district, and I'm sure the other council members do as well, asking what District 6 wants, what is lacking in our district for us to focus on, so I have several community meetings getting input, so it's not just ideas that I think would be cool, it's what the community has said that they want for our district. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
I will have a clarifier. So it's page 26 of the CIP. It says, "Projects that enhance or expand the park system will be considered in the future CIP as funding allows." I just wanted that to include a reduction or not just enhancement or expansion so that it allows multiple different options, and then we can weigh those options.
Right, Mayor, and I think the reason that comment is in the CIP is because it's going to be driven by the park plan update, as you mentioned, and so that's why I believe it's important to bring the RFP to the council in the scope of services so that we're following a direction that's consistent with what you want to review. And it may be multiple options. In the scope, we may talk about expansion of the system, contracting the system, I'm not going to presuppose at this point, but there may be multiple things we ask a consultant to look at.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. As we go forward with that, Bob, I would also like to see the park board weigh in on that.
Just to your comment, it was the park board that actually was driving the master plan and has put in their suggestions and objectives for the master plan.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I would also echo, just because we're on the topic of enhancement and utilization of our system. In terms of benchmarking, I know that the benchmark we were looking at for Parks and Recreation looked at on the budget side was, or I was closer to 2,780 in the park system, and I believe per line item, we spent about 4,690 per acre, and so I would also be interested in terms of utilization and enhancement, or utilization and enhancement, not expansion of systems. And I think that goes not just for parks, that goes for our entire system. For me, we're looking at things as how do we utilize what we have, not expand and add things to our project list.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question for Councilmember Glasscock, could you restate that? The goal is 4,690 per acre, but we are currently spending...
Let me find the exact page.
It's 285.
I don't have the exact page pulled up right now, but I can follow back up with that.
Okay, yeah, I have marked on 285 here, it's the benchmark that, the benchmark is 4,690, but last year, or last fiscal year, was 2,382 that we spent per acre.
Yeah, sorry, I was mentioning in terms of the increase from 2024 to 2025 and the projected increase and how we can better utilize the system, so I'll have more clarification, we can talk one-on-one.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks.
I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment. Please state your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
Is it afternoon yet? Almost, good afternoon. I'm Celeste Rosset, 2239 North Teetown Court. I want to point out something real quick about the debt, but I've appreciated the questions and the comments you've all made. You're digging into the budget, which I respect as a taxpayer, I want to compliment you before I begin. The debt does concern me, and one thing I want to bring to your attention on page 48 and 49 is that the tourism guest tax, the transient guest tax, for those of you that are new, it has been diverted, and it is actually paying off debt on the Fairfield Inn and Waterwalk. I don't know if you are aware of that, so you'll see that huge balloon payment for almost $2 million looming that you're going to have to pay for out of the transient guest tax, and I'm not sure if you're aware of that, the current city council members should already know that because I've talked about it before. I don't know why we gave money that goes to cultural arts to a developer's hotel, but that was a decision that predates those of you that are new. So we need to pay off that debt before we hit that balloon payment, so I want to focus on debt, if you don't mind bearing with me, because it is jumping in our mill levy. The debt portion of our property tax and the mill levy is going up to cover debt. And back to the original question on the credit rating, we took a drop in Moody's credit rating, and those of you that have been on city council should know this, we took a downgrade in our credit rating, so we're paying more in interest on our debt right now because we were dropped. And so I'm going to give you another warning, something that's not on our books, that current city council members who voted on the Ball Stadium know, is we also have debt that's not on our books, and I hope you're aware of that, the Starbond debt that was issued on the Ball Stadium is not on our books. So I was trying to see where we have a footnote warning you all and warning taxpayers that that debt's going to come out of the general fund, and did I miss it? I didn't see it in here, but principal's kicking in, and so that's going to increase unless we've got revenue on the Ball Stadium to cover it. I didn't see a footnote in the budget. And I'm also wondering what our revenue is going to be from the West Bank development, which we sold for a dollar an acre to help cover that debt. I didn't see a projection for that in the budget either, maybe I missed it. But I would again point out, we've got some debts that are not on the books, that you're going to have to cover, that are a liability, that could affect our debt rating, and so I would just caution you, be more transparent. Let's get a little footnote in there explaining the Fairfield Inn debt, let's get a little footnote in there about the Starbond debt on the Ball Stadium, just so taxpayers know there's more liability than you can see right now in this budget. I wanted to point out something, too, about the tourism, the transient guest tax. That was created under a charter ordinance to take care of our cultural arts buildings. So I would hope, as promised, that this year we finally fix the roof in the former public library. Thank you, Commissioner Glasscock, for asking about that. I really hope, as you saw, it's in disrepair. It's the only building in Kansas that's won the American Institute of Architects Design Awards, so please, can we fix the roof on that building this year because it's not in the SIP for next year? The Ice Center, I love the questions about the Ice Center because we're owed $1 million by the former people who managed it for 10 years, and they ripped out the cafe counter. We had a cafe on the second floor that, I love these questions about generating revenue, they ripped the counters out, they ripped the bar stools out, let's get a cafe back up and running, a restaurant selling snacks when we have all these people using the building. We used to have a great merchandise for the Ice Center, they also privately took out everything, didn't pay their vendors, let's stock that because people will need their skate sharpened, they'll need laces, they'll need to rent things when they're here. Those were great. Pick up on that with using the building as it was originally intended before we had it run down by private people, and I won't mention their names, but it was upsetting to me when they destroyed that building. The last thing I want to say is I'm glad that when we talk about Century 2 and Populus, that they need to revise those numbers, because one of their estimates for renovating Century 2 was cladding the entire building in aluminum panels, which is so ridiculous. So when you do come to renovation, make sure Populus revises their estimates, and when is the Hyatt going to build their second tower? We sold them land behind Century 2 to do a second tower on the hotel with the new promenade, and I'm wondering why they haven't done that yet. I didn't see that in the budget either. But anyway, I appreciate the questions asked today, it's been a long meeting, thank you for your time.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, can you speak to whatever she's talking about that's not on the books, the Starbond debt?
Yes, actually, if you don't mind, Mayor, there's a couple of things I just want to make sure we're clear on in the record. We do have a requirement on the Starbond debt to backstop for any debt that is not covered through sales tax, and if you think of this as a TIF district, similar to a TIF district, there may be years where there is not as much sales tax as there is debt. However, it's projected by, through the period of the debt, again, which is on the books of the state, it's state debt, not ours, but we still have an obligation to help backstop that debt, that by the end of the debt, we should be in a positive position, not a negative position. So that's the first issue. Second issue, pardon me?
What's the length of time, period?
I think it's 20 years?
36, I think.
Thirty?
38, I don't know.
It's more than 30 years, apparently. We can get that information. Second issue has to do with our drop in credit rating from Moody's. I just want to note that I don't remember anything that reflected city policy, financial policies that led to that reduction in our credit rating. It had to do with the cyclical nature of our business activity and our economic activity, and at that time, there was concerns about the state of aviation-related businesses, and so, and that we were so dependent on the aviation industry that they called into question the impact that would have on our finances going forward, especially our property tax revenues. So I don't recall that it was anything that the council had done in policy or anything in our budget that reflected that. At that time, they did encourage us to continue to increase our reserves and our fund balances, which the council has done now for a number of years. So actually, I was hoping that we'd get some favorable treatment by the agencies going forward. And the last thing is I just want to make clear that the .7 shift, .7 of a mil, the seven tenths of a mil, that shift is to actually cash fund projects, not to increase debt, right? And so I just, I want to make sure that's clear, that we're not incurring additional debt, going to market and incurring additional debt, instead we're trying to tilt the balance more towards cash funding of projects in 2025.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. That .7 mil, is that going to be targeted at any, like, balloon debts that we can pay off now, that way we don't pay off more later? What exactly are the plans of that .7 million?
Yes, sir, short answer to your question, no, it won't be targeted towards any specific projects. What we do each year, and actually, we're getting ready to do it here in about a month, you'll see that when we issue bonds this fall, we examine all the projects that we have that are in progress and all the temporary notes we have outstanding, and then we either take them out with cash to the ability that we have with our cash balance, or we're going to issue bonds. So specific to your question, if we have more cash in the debt service fund by shifting the mill levy for one year, that just means that we can take out more notes with cash, not on, I can tell you the projects when we do that, I just can't tell you today, which means we'll have to issue less in bonds.
Okay, and yeah, I assume you guys target the most appropriate ones first.
Yeah, I mean, we might have 100 projects in the note sales, so we'll have plenty to choose from.
Okay, appreciate it.
I think this is a comment regarding our current, most current speaker. I'd like to know if we can have a, it's part of our analysis today, but the TIF districts, it's page number two of our green sheet, I would like a full report on these TIF districts, so East Bank, West Bank, South Fork, Center City, Kenmore, Douglas, Hillside, Riverside, ICT 21, and Union Station, but I would also like to add, I guess, the baseball stadium to that. I'd like a report on that so that we know not only how long, as we mentioned, I think just recently, the baseball one is more than 30 years, but we don't know for sure. So if we could just have it as a report, that would be helpful. I don't think it's in the CIP, is it?
It's on the website.
Can we?
Mayor, we provide information on the TIF districts quarterly to you, and we could give you the information from the last quarter, plus we do have information about each district, I think, on the website. The Star Bonds is what we don't have reported, that we can get you the length of debt. Again, recognizing it's not our debt, it's the state debt, but we can, so we don't even have, I don't think we get a financial report on the performance of that debt. Is that right, Mark? Yeah, we'll have to work with the trustee for that debt to see what information we can get for you.
Maybe this is an additional item, maybe to add to the website, then, if we can add that to the website.
Again, it's not our debt, and we don't want to mislead in that regard.
A specific link to the state document, then?
I don't believe so. The trustee is careful in terms of what information is provided even to us.
We will continue public comment.
Hi there, I'm Alan Kaler, I'm here on behalf of Bike Walk Wichita, and I just wanted to follow up on the questions about the bicycle and pedestrian expenditures. Paul did a good job of responding to some specific questions. As he pointed out, that the line item there or the table there showing the 48 million is for multimodal projects, and in fact, the three biggest expenditures there are for things that you wouldn't really consider as bicycle and pedestrian improvements. First of all, the biggest one being traffic signalization, the second one being the sidewalk maintenance, and the third being arterial sidewalk program now. Of course, those are, we, as Bike Walk Wichita, we are in favor of improving and maintaining the sidewalks, but those are not for recreational bike riders, that sort of thing. So I think that if there's, you know, have any other question on that, I'd be happy to address those as well. But I also wanted to just step back, since I came up here for that purpose anyway, I just wanted to step back and talk, first of all, that Bike Walk Wichita is not to, doesn't, does not advocate for people, so that people like me can race their bicycles around the streets of Wichita. The purpose of Bike Walk Wichita is to make Wichita really a better place to live by making biking and walking safe, equitable, and appealing. It aligns very well with the mission of the city of Wichita. And in fact, it is clear that communities that encourage biking and walking are safer. They're safer because people are out in their neighborhoods, meeting each other, walking around, getting to know each other, watching what's going on. It's also healthier, communities that encourage biking and walking are healthier for obvious reasons, people are getting activity and so forth, and it is, communities that encourage biking and walking are stronger. They're stronger socially for the same reason that I mentioned, the safe, people are out and meeting each other, talking to each other and so forth, but they're also stronger economically because people, again, who are out in their neighborhoods or buying things locally, they're going to the local stores and so forth. In fact, W, the Young Division of the Chamber of Commerce, I forget what it was. In fact, W, the Young Division of the Chamber of Commerce, I forget what it was off the top of my head, does a study regularly, asking its members and people in that group what they look to when choosing a job. And when you look through their various factors, the top thing after things like obviously salary and job responsibility, things that are directly job-related, the top thing that people focus on in responding to that is the quality of life and specifically the opportunities to get out and engage in activities, in parks, walking, to be able to go to places easily through biking and walking. So it contributes to the economic health of the city as well as to its safety and to its health. So it is not, as I said, it's not to allow people like me to just be able to race around on their bikes on the streets. It contributes to all of the goals that the city of Wichita has. I hope that helps. Be happy to talk to any of you further about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional public comments?
Hello, Twyla Purity Polo Club. I don't know if you can see, I really have worked over the budget. Five minutes here isn't a lot of time. First of all, thank you guys for the kind words when my husband was hurt in a drunk driving accident. That meant a lot to me, so thank you. The budget is an impressive document, and this is going to sound, some of these things are going to sound critical, but I'm just going to try to nail in, hone in on a couple of things. One of them is transparency. I know transparency is important to the council, it's important to the citizens, and so I was, and transparency drives goal setting. So I went through the document, the budget document, and I read every vision and mission statement looking for the commitment to transparency. I found the word transparent once, and it was on page 280 with the planning department. So I just wanted to point that out. Some of you may have heard that from me before. And under the topic of transparency, I was also looking for, and it could be in here, but it's hard to find, the cost of litigation, the cost of settlements paid out, and on litigation, there is a reference in the vision statement to litigation, but there's not a measurement, and that reference is on page 252. It's in the Civil Legal Service of the Law Department. So cost of settlements paid out would be another thing the community is interested in, and these could be settlements paid out, you know, for internal like HR or external suits against police or the city for different things. And another thing that I found missing was, well, maybe hard to find might be the more correct term, income from civil asset forfeitures. How much is the city getting from that? Does it change year over year? Okay, so now I'm gonna, any of these comments aren't going to have any impact, and I don't expect anything on the current budget, but it's just looking ahead when we're looking at this future looming budget deficit. And it's really the disconnect between the mission, the vision, and the goals and the measurements that are available in the budget. You've heard me say before, you can't manage what you don't measure. People pay attention to what's measured. And I just started just with the airport. You know, the mission, provide a safe, efficient, customer-friendly, fiscally responsible airport system that serves airport tenants, airport users, and the public. And there's some great goals, maintain a financially self-sustaining airport system, market real estate properties and services, et cetera. You can read the rest of them, but then the measures are benchmarks, you know, average domestic itinerary fare, cost per in plane passenger. It's just hard to see where these connect and how you can have staff accountability for the financial efficiency of any city department, and I just use that as just one example. I've been attending city council meetings for quite a while, and as a businesswoman, I've just seen things where the city is behind businesses, how purchasing is done in financially profitable organizations, and I know, but I think what's missing really is goal setting. Even just today, the folks who came up on the crime stuff, you know, they're giving you statistics, but where are the measurements that back that stuff up? You know, there's goals, it's smart goals. Many of you have probably heard of them. They should be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. That's how businesses run. They have visions, mission statements, they have goals that support them, and measurements that support these goals to see if folks are on track. I understand that that is a future goal of the city, to get to that point, but what I really want to implore every single one of you, these decisions, when we look at a deficit, it's going to impact your employees if they lose their jobs, citizens if there's reduced services. So please dig in, roll up your sleeves, demand accountability, demand quick measurements, or that they develop these quick measurements that really measure the efficacy of every department. I think you'll find there's lots of room for improvement, and the city will be much better off fiscally. There's a reason businesses run their businesses based on these really simple concepts. And I would also say that it may take different folks or assistance from outside business organizations or maybe WSU. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any further public comment? I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I'd like to talk about, and tell me if this is not the appropriate time, but I'd like to talk about the golf irrigation. I would like to talk about possibly making a one-year commitment of $1 million for the 2025 budget to help golf get their irrigation started. And what I appreciate about the golf community or is they're going to have some skin in the game too, and I think that's important. So I think the first and worst off golf course is Sims, and the bid was 1.5 million. So if we were able to give them a million, they would be able to make up the difference. And the reason why I think it's important to add it to the budget this time is because even if we gave them the green light today, it would take almost a year for them to start the repairs on the golf course. And I believe to date, in the last 18 to 24 months, they've spent about $400,000 just in irrigation repairs. Yes, I'm sorry for the CIP.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few comments before we vote too. I have a challenge with delaying cuts. I wish we had a contingency of not exceeding revenue neutral in this as well. And I do want to see a proposal where we would cut the 12.4 million if we didn't exceed revenue neutral. I know that 12.4 million is probably a challenge, that may not be possible, but if there is a few million dollars of cuts that we can make, I would like to see where that would come from, or even if it's not cuts, how we can get back some of our revenue in terms of user fees for different parts of our system. I would also like a note on each department, where each department could cut, where they plan to cut in 2026, 2027 as well, just so that's in this document, so we're forward-looking in this process. In terms of policy, I'm also interested in terms of eliminating the dirt street program and redirecting that three to four million every single year in residential streets and residential maintenance, and how much further we can get with that instead of the dirt street program as presented. I'm confident that we can get more bang for the buck in terms of residential streets rather than dirt streets. And then lastly, selling off property and land that we have and making a conscientious effort to be able to sell off land. In the 2024 budget, we saw a decrease of 49.5% from, I think it was actuals to budgeted, or it was from 2023 to 2024, one of those two, and it's only allocating about $100,000 of recouping investment in terms of selling off property, when just this year, we had an increase of more than a half a million dollars in just one sale of the property off Opportunity Drive. So if there's parcels of land that are able to be sold, if there's property that we could sell to recoup some of the loss in revenue, I would also be interested in putting an effort on that. And then lastly, in terms of the recommended action from staff, one of the recommended actions is to authorize staff to notify the Sedro County Clerk of the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. I don't know if that's required by state language or if it's just a hearing, whether or not to exceed.
We have to, we are required by the state statute to notify the city county clerk that we intend to exceed the revenue, or we want the option to exceed the neutral revenue rate.
So option and not intent, those are two different things.
The way the state law requires you to give notice, you have to declare your intent to exceed, but it's understood that your final action is on the date that you establish, which is August 20th.
Okay. I will have a challenge and will probably vote against the proposal today or the, if there is a resolution solely because of the word intent, because I don't have an intent to do it, I want the option, but I don't have an intent to exceed revenue neutral, so maybe semantics. So I'd be interested in hearing colleagues as well.
Can that be decoupled from the recommended action? It has to be voted?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you could have a separate action on the R and R if that's what you...
Can we go back to the slide regarding the recommendation?
I mean, yes, you could pull that out, but if you do not notify the clerk that you intend to not exceed that revenue base, then we cannot. So it leaves, you don't have to, but it leaves the option open, so when you come back on August the 20th, you can have a budget that exceeds that neutral rate or does not. It's up to the council at that point.
And that deadline is July 20th.
Councilmember Glasscock, you had asked, what about if we did, if we only took half of the amount above R and R? You wouldn't have the freedom to do that either. If you don't approve the notice, then you don't, you simply can't, you'll lose the 12.4, you don't have the option to do something less than that.
Okay, let me think about that. I just have a problem with the word intent, when that is not my intent, and we don't know what it would look like cutting 12.4. So that's my challenge today.
I'm sorry, and regarding the dates, the notice of the intent has to be sent by July 20th, and then your hearing, your actual final budget hearing cannot start before August 20th.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the context.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one note real quick. My boys over at Cowtown, looks like a $9,000 increase next year in the budget. Maybe we could take a look at inching that up a little bit. I know we did give them a little bit of a bump last year, but we have a new director and a lot of good things going on, and just not sure now's the time to take the foot off of the gas. And then also, just to my colleagues, you know, we, cutting the services has an impact on the day-to-day lives of a lot of our residents. I just, everybody's perspective is their own, you know, everybody's intent is their own, but I would just urge you to temper that a little bit because we don't know what the revenue is going to be in the future. And these, again, these cuts have a major impact. We're down to essentially street sweeping once a year now. It used to be three times a year. A lot of people in my neighborhoods are having issues with dead trees, dead tree removal, which is a hazard, a health hazard to people as well. So again, we got to work this all out. We do have to balance the budget. We did put money into the reserve to step it down in a organized, strategic way. So those are my two cents on this going forward, and we have another month of discussion around the budget coming up, so it should be interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember Hoheisel, I appreciate that. This is my first rodeo, and it's an interesting rodeo, so see how it goes. I think it is important to approve the notice of intent, Councilman Glasscock, because if we don't, it takes away one of our options. We can approve the budget, whatever budget that is, on August 20th, but if we take away that option, it does limit what we can do today. So I think that is important. And respected of Vice Mayor Ballard's request for Golf Enterprise Fund, I would definitely support that, not only because I'm a golfer and see it as I walk down the fairway and there's puddles of water on the fairway or rough because there's, hasn't been maintained over the years. Those systems are all almost 40 years old. It's very old for an irrigation system, and I think it's a case of deferred maintenance. I realize it's an enterprise fund, I get that, and the golfers want to invest in it, but there's also the management of it, and I think right now Jesse's done a great job with managing it, and we have to take that opportunity to invest in him a little bit and support that and at least get one of them, one of them started. So I definitely will support that.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just have one quick question for Councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Ballard, and then just a few comments, but if we're talking about adding 1.1 and a half million into, 1 million, I'm so sorry, into the CIP, it's, so right now it's 3 million, 3 billion 59 million, so it'd be, are you saying keep it the 3 million, 3 billion 59 million, or are you saying add a million to the CIP? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yes, it makes perfect sense. We're going to take a look at that and how that could be funded and bring that back.
Okay, because I'm just concerned of if we, you know, I'm always concerned of adding it, but I'm more concerned if we don't add it and we cut, where the cut's going to come from and how will that be determined? So that was just my concern, my question.
When I bring something back on that, we'll probably either have an option of taking something, some park improvements amounting to a million dollars, either deferring those or eliminating those, or we'll look at our ability to finance what that million dollars does to our ability to finance. Just, I need a little time to...
Okay, great, just, because today, isn't today the day that we have to set the amount and then we can't go over it? We can go equal or under, so don't we have to know today if it's going to be adding it or cutting out? Mark's going, no. So Mark, you always tell me when I'm wrong, and I love that, so come up and tell me I'm wrong.
I can handle that.
Okay, thank you.
It has to do with the operating budget, not the capital improvement.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. We've never had anything happen like this before, so I learned something new and I appreciate it. I just want to take a few moments to thank a few people. I know it's been a long meeting, but I think it's important. Thank you, Bob, for this process. I know you've been through many, many budgets, and it's not easy, and I don't think people understand how much work goes into all of this. So thank you for all you do and for being a role model for staff. I also want to thank the finance team, I want to thank Mark and Elizabeth who are in front of us, but all of your team who we don't see every day, who are working extremely hard on this and just doing a fantastic job to help be a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. It's not our money, it's the taxpayers' dollars. I also want to thank all the departments. I used to work at the county years ago, and I was over, you know, part of our budgeting process, and I know how much time goes into it from there, so I'm very respectful and cognizant of the time that the staff puts in. I also want to thank the three community members who were here today. It looks like a couple of them had to take off, so Alan, thanks for staying strong. But then also the community members who took the time for the budget simulator, we got a nice report on that, thank you very much, Bob. And then also the community survey. We are driving this budget based on the community survey, so the people who took their time to give us their input, we couldn't do this without them, and we wouldn't do as well as we're doing without them. And then finally, I say this every year, this is my sixth time, so I'll say it again, I believe so strongly that this is the most important vote that I will make all years on August 20th. Where you allocate your treasure is a reflection of your values. So I also will look forward to the next month. I'm sure we'll have lots of robust discussions and opportunities for more, but I think at the end, we're going to be extremely proud of the budget that we have developed in this CIP, so thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to add to the conversation yet again, the point I brought up earlier, and it is just me saying this, the council has not agreed to that, but I would love for the public to truly consider the type of government that you have working for you. And the mil levy conversation is one that I think everyone should have. Again, one mil would generate approximately $5 million for us. Again, one mill would generate approximately $5 million for us, two mills would generate 10, and as you hear the discussion today about potential cuts and reduced services, that's going to be very important. And for those who are considering what that means, for every $100,000 of valuation you have, that's about an extra $11.50 per year that you would pay more. So $100,000 house, $11.50, $150,000 house, $17.25, $200,000 house, $23, $400,000 house, $46. While that does sound like a lot and that is real money, you have to think about the potential decisions that the council has to make, potential reductions in parking wrecks, arts, potential reduced street sweeping, extended times on mowing in our parks and other spaces that we own, reduced services outside of public safety, potential reduced library access, all of the things that we talked about today that are great for our community, could be reduced if we have those budget challenges. And every department that everyone cares about has people working in it that have to get paid and those wages will go up. We have to pay people what, what they deserve, we have to be competitive, so over time, it's going to continue to go up. And whether this body increases a mill levy or not, it's going to happen. I've been saying this for a few years now, the cost of having people do these services is going to continue to rise and we can be proud about not raising the mill levy since I was six maybe, when Wu-Tang and De La Soul and Tupac were on the radio and we had things like duck hunt, and now we have augmented reality and five and a quarter inch floppy disk, and now we have terabyte devices. We could be proud of that and that's something that, you know, we can talk about, but the reality is the world has changed quite a bit, it's going to keep changing. We have to be competitive in public safety and looking at a mill levy increase is a way to stabilize public safety, reduce services the least amount over time. And yes, it would be an increase and yes, that would be 32 years later that we finally did it, but at some point, we're going to have a government that only does core services and gives you barely anything, or we're going to have to increase something. We're not going to be able to cut our way into better services. We're not going to be able to cut our way into cutting trees down and edging up those things sooner. Something's going to have to give at some point, so I think it's incumbent on the public to decide what type of government you want. I am supportive because I see the need there and I see the great opportunities that were presented today and more that our city's working on, but it's a discussion that we have to have and we can run from it or we can run into it, but I think it's time that we have that discussion and be serious about it.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Just one quick question for staff, and I know you won't have the answer to this today. To echo Councilman Johnson, I think what we do should just be core services and the essential services of government, that's the role of government, and there's a role of the private sector as well. I would be interested in seeing a comparison of staff versus the city population in terms of how many staff we have per resident from 20 years ago, 10 years ago, and now, to see the size and scope of government, that have we increased the size of government, have we decreased the size of government over the last 20 years, and how has it resulted in services? So I think for me, I would just be interested in seeing staffing in comparison to our population and whether that's increased or decreased the size and scope of local government.
With that, I don't see any further comments.
Mayor. I do have something. First of all, I want to thank the council for getting a lot of these issues out. It's much easier for us to respond today than if we had this three, four weeks from now, so thank you so much. And we should be able, I mean, there's a lot of staff work that's going to go into responding to all of this. However, there are two things that came from you, Councilmember Glasscock, that would be substantial efforts, and I'm not sure I have enough guidance or understand that the council consents on us spending the amount of time necessary to get this done. One is to get the R and R plan, in other words, to come up with $12 million of cuts for '25 and then the compounding amount going forward. So that will be a substantial effort along with the listing of cuts by department for what I think was '25 and '26, if I understood your request. And I, everything else I know I can get done, those two things, we've just spent several months putting the budget together, and I'm afraid if I go back to the departments without any kind of guidance or any kind of narrowing of the focus, it's going to be a really hard initiative. And I don't want to bring something back that sets up straw men either. I mean, I could do the, you know, a 10% across the board cut, and I don't think that's going to respond to what you or the community wants. So there's going to have to be some strategic thinking and I'm just not quite sure how to get that done and if that will be the exercise that the council wants us to go through.
I can speak to that a little bit. My concern is that we're just assuming that we're going to completely capture all 8.1% and I don't know if I'm there, I don't think I'm there to be able to capture full 8.1%. Now, am I there to capture a certain percentage? Yes, and so maybe not a proposal back to us of the full 8.1%, but at least what cuts could be made that can decrease the 8.1% to even if it's a 4% or lesser percent. So that would be my intention, but I'm open to my colleagues, if there's no will of that, then I wouldn't have the support.
Mayor, if I can just respond to Councilmember Glasscock, the reason I asked, I went back, you know, we did get some thought to what is going to position us for '26, '27 and ' '28, right? And so that's when we offered those, that tier 3B. Well, I could probably get you there, but I'm not sure that you're going to find acceptable some of the things that are in 3B. And so that, then I have to try to think again, I'm almost trying to guess where you're going to be or where you want to be.
I could come up with maybe a list of items that I'm concerned about. Like I said, I had 72 questions, so I can send you some of those and.
And we meet, you know, this week.
We can meet tomorrow and talk more about it.
As well, right, right, but I just want to make sure that collectively that I'm serving the council and where you want us to go strategically.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and maybe this is a silly question or comment, but what about the tiered suggestions for the budget cuts? I mean, hasn't that what the staff already did, where we, you know, the four different tiers of things that we could potentially look at, wouldn't that kind of suffice for where departments thought that there might be some opportunities?
I think that's my dilemma, Councilmember Tuttle. We've implemented or will implement the first three tiers.
Three tiers, okay, okay.
It's really just 3B that we need to continue to drill down on to determine, and again, those were just to help us get over the hump with what we project as a structural deficit for '27 and '28.
I was just trying to think of a way to maybe streamline it so, because, because I understand it would be a huge burden to, you know, have every department try and find cuts and it might, you know, send off alarms that we're not sure we want to do, so I was hoping for an easy button, but thank you.
With that, I'm going to add a couple of comments before I make a motion. First and foremost, I think we have a very robust group of individuals that have robust conversation regarding the budget and I really appreciate that because I do believe what Councilmember Tuttle said is this is the most important vote that we will make this year on August 20th of 2024, because this is, again, a direction of how the city council believes they're listening to community in how we're going to move forward as a council and as a city of Wichita. It really frustrates me that a budget deficit has not been the main rhetoric in our community over the last two years, it's been an aside. And that aside has been disingenuous to community, thinking that we've been in a great position when in reality, we're not. And so part of being transparent and communicating is being honest, and the honesty requires us to, again, put it all out on the table and have these open discussions because as you all know, only three council members at a time can have conversations regarding policy or else it's a violation of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So having these conversations do take time, but it's because we're trying our very best to ask pertinent questions that community is asking us to make, sorry, to ask, and then make wise decisions from this bench moving forward. So I really want to thank staff because I know that they've been working very hard. I do not doubt that the 15 department heads have been working multiple hundreds of hours in trying to figure out how to be responsible with taxpayer dollars and we're trying to do the same. But I do believe that when it comes to property taxes, those are to cover your core essential services, and so core essential services are police, fire, infrastructure. And I do believe that we need to have a much greater conversation moving forward of what property taxes should be covering versus sales taxes versus fees generated by enterprise funds. So I will be reluctant to make the third recommended action, so I'm going to move to, I will move to approve the first two and the last, so set the public hearing for August 20th, authorize publication of the formal public hearing notice, and receive and file the 2024-2033 proposed capital improvement program, and we can take a different vote on the third recommended action. But I want that to be my motion and I do see that there are council members trying to chime in.
And second, for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Mayor, I apologize, I think I may need you to read verbatim your motion just to make sure we're covered legally and.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
I move that the city council set the public hearing on the revenue neutral and proposed 2025 budget, including tax increment financing districts and the self-supporting municipal improvement district and the recertification for the CID and TBID funds for August 20th, 2024. In addition, I move that the city council authorize publication of the formal public hearing notices, approve the first reading of the ordinances for the general tax levy for the city of Wichita, TIF districts and SSMID. And then, and then the last, I will move that the city council receive and file the 2025-2034 proposed capital improvement program. I have a motion and a second.
I believe we need you to also authorize staff to make technical adjustments required to complete with state statute, that has nothing to do with.
Okay. Sorry, in addition to, after I said SSMID, I also authorize city council, I move that the city council authorize staff to make any technical adjustments required to comply with state statute. And I move that the city council set the, sorry, that the city council receive and file the 2025-2034 proposed capital improvement program.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I think you still need to establish a maximum budget by state law because you can't, you have to do that today and that sets the ceiling for expenses, which I think is consistent with where the council is, but that's required as you're setting the public hearing date, that you establish.
Okay, so the entire piece before authorize staff to notify Sedgwick County?
Correct.
I will reamend, I move again to authorize staff to make any technical adjustments required to comply with state statute, set a maximum amount of taxes levied for any technical adjustments required to comply with, sorry, set a maximum amount of taxes levied for the city of Wichita at $164,093,246, based on an anticipated mill levy of 32.743 mills and an estimated assessed valuation of $5,115,884,925, set the maximum amount of taxes levied for the self-supporting municipal improvement district at $888,489, based on an estimated levy of 6.801 mills and an estimated assessed valuation of $130,640,970, and receive and file the 2025-2034 proposed capital improvement program.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a little pushback, over the last two to three years, we actually have been talking about the deficit coming up. That was what caused the council, former council's actions of putting money into the reserve. We have been very transparent about that. I've heard many of my colleagues who served with me at the time, as well as me going out and just talking to folks in neighborhoods, so we've been pretty open about the deficits coming and took some actions to try to reduce that. Also, I am more supportive of the original action, so I would like to offer a substitute motion for the council to set the public hearing on the revenue neutral rate and the proposed 2025 budget, including the tax increment financing districts and the self-supporting municipal improvement district and the recertification for the CID and TBID funds for August 20th, 2024, authorize publication of the formal public hearing notices, approve first reading of the ordinances for the general tax levy for the city of Wichita, TIF districts and SMID, authorize staff to make any technical adjustments required to comply with the state statute, set a maximum amount of taxes levied for the city of Wichita at $164,093,246, based on an anticipated mill levy of 32.743 mills and an estimated assessed evaluation of $5,115,584,925, set the maximum amount of taxes levied for the self-supporting municipal improvement district at $888,489, based on estimated levy of 6.801 mills and an estimated assessed valuation of $130,640,970, authorize staff to notify the Sedgwick County Clerk of the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the city of Wichita taxing funds and the SMID taxing fund, and receive and file the 2025-2034 proposed capital improvement program.
Second. Motion and a second, there's further discussion, Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Johnson that it's frustrating to hear you constantly talk about the old council, keeping things in the dark, not being transparent. I understand that you weren't at all of the meetings over the past couple of years, so, but we have talked about how ARPO is going to be getting us through the next two years and that the coming budgets would be, we would have to make some hard decisions, so, you know, I respect all of the council members up here and think we all have the best intentions and want to do the very best job, but insulting past councils is, I don't think that's the way to go to continue to do good work for the community and together.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I second and third the comments. I can't remember a single budget meeting we've had that, it wasn't indicated that we had a fiscal cliff coming up in 2026, 2027, 2028. And again, that is why we put that money in there, we could have been doing individual projects within our own districts, spreading it out as we wanted to. We wanted to do the fiscally responsible thing and put it in there so we can step it down in the future, so I agree with my colleagues on that one. I know I've been talking about it till my residents' ears have been bleeding at neighborhood association meetings and whatnot, just trying to make sure everybody knows about this. So again, I just echo their, their comments there.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, I just have a comment, a question, and then probably a comment. My comment is going to be that, as I mentioned, this is my sixth year doing the budget and we've made budget cuts every year that I've been here, even in 2019 when things were pretty good before the pandemic and then we had the pandemic and then we had the after pandemic. I don't remember a year that I've been on council that we haven't been fiscally responsible, transparent and made cuts whenever we could, so I'm pretty proud of that. I think that we do a good job of making sure the community is engaged. I think this last year, we had, during this budget process and we're not even done, we'll have 19 opportunities for community engagement, so I'm really proud of that. I think that's great and good on finance and communications for making sure those all happen. My question, Sharon, with legal, I just want to make sure I understand exactly what's happening. So there was a motion from the mayor to have the budget and the CIP but not the revenue neutral rate. It was seconded. Councilmember Johnson made a motion for the budget, the CIP and the revenue neutral rate, it was seconded by Vice Mayor, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so here's my comment. Last year, I remember having the same struggle. If we say today that we are going to vote, and tell me when I'm wrong, Mark, Sharon, Bob, all the, all the people, if we vote today to exceed the revenue neutral rate, that doesn't mean we're going to, it just gives us the option, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
So last year, if I remember correctly, and please don't quote me on this, but I'm almost positive, even some of us who voted against the budget because of the revenue neutral rate was going to be expended, exceeded, we voted to allow this to happen just in case. Because what I understand Mark said earlier, if we don't vote to potentially exceed the revenue neutral rate today, then we don't have any other options. It has to be this budget. And I'm on track with Councilmember Glasscock. I would like to see if there's anything else we can cut. But $12 million out of this budget, knowing that next year, we're going to have more budget cuts, seems extreme. I think today, if we say, and I'm not telling anyone how to vote, I'm going to say today, I will be supportive of exceeding the revenue neutral rate. I'm not saying what I'm going to do August 20th. I'm just going to say today, if we don't do this, it puts us in a really precarious position where we have no options other than to make deep cuts, where maybe we could make cuts that are reasonable and can put us in a better trajectory for next year. So I just want to make sure that we all understand that, that if we today do not consider exceeding the revenue neutral rate, $12 million is coming out of this budget somewhere. Am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
And this would be a question for staff before I would have subsequent comments. Yes, there'd have to be 12.8 million or 12.4, 12.8? Four, 12.4 million dollars of cuts. Could that be redirected from CIP allocation based on what percent of the mill goes to CIP versus the general budget as well?
Yes, the council in the past has moved back and forth in terms of the levy. So if you, if you decided to cut 12.4 and you wanted to backfill it by reducing what goes to the debt service levy, you have the freedom to do that. We'd have to determine how that's done, but, you know, because we have existing that has to be paid. So we have to see what that implication would be.
So it could be a 12.4 million dollar cut from CIP, not necessarily affecting general budget operations, if we just reallocate a portion of the mill from the CIP.
Right. And of course, that has implications on our ability to maintain infrastructure. So I mean.
Or create new infrastructure.
That's different. And we're, again, we're trying, over 50% of this CIP is for maintenance projects, so.
Okay. I think with those comments, I believe mill is for essential services, local government. And I think there is a conversation, we're talking about a sales tax component. I'm very interested in seeing what a sales tax would look like to fund things outside of the essential functions of government. I think the conversation that we're having today is about what is the size and scope of government, especially when it comes to nonessential services. And I'm looking forward to seeing how the size of government has increased based off the size of our population. I think Wichitaans are making tough decisions with their budgets. I think we need to as well. And sometimes I think we have to force ourselves to make tough decisions because we're not going to make tough decisions unless we're forced to make this tough decision. So I will not be supporting Councilman Johnson's amendment today, and I will be voting no on the subsequent.
I see no further comments. We have a motion from Councilmember Johnson and a second from Vice Mayor Ballard. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just want to go on record, too. Today, I am going to be supportive of the motion to exceed the revenue neutral rate. I am not making a commitment to what I will do in August 20th because, you know, I want to see what's going to happen. But I do like the option of having some flexibility. Originally, Councilmember Glasscock, you're the one who kind of convinced me of that. It seems like, you know, some things are shifting, and that's completely fine. But I think, so I'm just going on record saying today, I'm voting to say we may exceed the revenue neutral rate just so that we can have flexibility in the next month of the budgeting. I'm not making a commitment that I will or won't on August 20th. Thank you.
We have a motion from Councilmember Johnson and a second by Vice Mayor Ballard. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes four to two. Yeah, motion passes four to two. Sorry, five to two. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
PUD 2024-9, Zone Change Request in the City From SF5 Single Family Residential District To Planned Unit Development To Create The Black Bear Bosun Price Residential District, PUD Number 128, Generally Located One Block West Of North Woodlawn Boulevard And Two Blocks South Of East 13th Street North.
Hello and good afternoon. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. For this case, the applicant is requesting, as you heard, to rezon the property from SF5 to planned unit development, which is custom zoning. This item is being heard because protests have been received against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting the rezoning in order to reuse the existing former school building for multifamily residential. Please note that during the DAB meeting and prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant changed their request. The change was to allow single-family residential in the undeveloped portion of the property instead of fourplexes, duplexes, and single-family as originally requested. So they scaled down the scope of the residential development that could take place. In terms of the property, the site is generally located to the west of Woodlawn Boulevard and south of 13th Street. It is made up of one parcel. That parcel is approximately 6.69 acres in size, currently zoned SF5 single-family and developed with the former school building and associated open spaces. In terms of context, as you can see here, the subject site is surrounded on all sides by SF5 single-family zoning district and developed with single-family dwellings, as you can see here. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about the requested land uses, parking, landscaping, screening, and signage. In terms of review, on June 10th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request. There was not a quorum of DAB members there, so the board took no action. However, DAB members generally expressed that they were in favor of the request after the applicant changed their request to remove the language permitting duplexes and fourplexes on the property outside of the school. Multiple members of the public expressed concern regarding increased traffic and the development of duplexes and fourplexes. However, again, because the applicant changed their request, the members of the public indicated support following that change. On June 13th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and recommended approval 10 to 0. That was subject to the modified PUD language regarding the single-family development. In terms of protest, there were multiple protests received against this application. The protest petitions within the protest area equaled more than 40% of the total protest area, and so therefore, this request would require a supermajority or six out of seven votes in order to approve it. One note that I would make on that is it is planning staff's understanding that many of those protest petitions were collected even prior to the DAB meeting. And so it's our understanding, they were submitted after the MAPC but signed with the understanding that that would be developed with fourplexes, which the developers changed their, their application on that. In terms of council action, it's recommended the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. Again, this would require six of seven votes because of the protest. Alternatives include overriding the Planning Commission, adopting alternative findings, and denying the rezoning request. That would require five of seven votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, which requires just a simple majority. And as always, a quick note about the planning process and that the public hearing takes place at the MAPC meeting. With that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and images. Here's the aerial showing the site outlined in that blue-green color. Here's the zoning map, again, showing SF5 surrounding the property. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan, which shows it as commercial. Here is the PUD document that was submitted as part of the application. And you can see parcel one consists of the school building. Parcel two is everything else surrounding it. Here's the protest map. Again, the ones in red are the ones within the protest area that were valid with all the signatures that were necessary. Here's photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. This item does not get a public hearing. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. As Scott said, I originally received a lot of protest to this. The District Advisory Board meeting was very engaging. We didn't have quorum because we moved it to the second Monday, so some of the DAB members had commitments. But after that meeting and the applicant being there and agreeing to some changes, many of the people who reached out to me originally were okay with this. Their main concern was the multifamily aspect on that and the traffic it would bring. The applicant solely focused on the school and has rehabbed a few other ones here in Wichita. So they were more acceptable of that. I believe if we would have had quorum, this would have passed DAB as well. But before I make a motion, one clarification. Scott, I left that other sheet that we had in our meeting in my office. Is the MAPC language the same as limited in the single family?
It is, yes, sir. And one thing I would just point out, in case of confusion, is that attached to this packet are two sets of PUD language. One reflects what the original application was. The second one reflects what the MAPC approved after the applicant changed their application.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. With that, I will move that the council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Application Commitments.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. Sally Stang with the Housing and Community Services Department for the record. The item that I have for you today are commitments related to the low-income housing tax credit applications associated with the MAC. So as you know, the Wichita Housing Authority was unsuccessful in securing financing to convert its public housing single-family homes under HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, the RAD. HUD experts recommended the sale of the single-family homes and reinvestment of the net proceeds into a new Section 8 subsidized project. The regulations are very specific, and the proceeds can only be used in a Section 8 subsidized project or a new public housing project. To date, five disposition applications covering 215 of the 352 units have been submitted to HUD, and four of them have been approved. As part of that disposition process, HUD has allocated tenant protection vouchers to offset the loss of public housing units. And those TPVs add to our overall allocation of vouchers. Housing authorities have the option, they can choose to what they call project base, up to 20% of its voucher allocation, plus an additional 10% for projects that are for housing for people experiencing homelessness. However, project-based voucher units that replace public housing units are exempted from the cap altogether. So an allocation of project-based vouchers actually has no impact on our overall cap in this particular project. By project-basing voucher, it attaches the subsidy to the housing unit rather than the participating family. However, under the regulations, a participating household can request a tenant-based voucher after they've been successfully housed for at least a year in that project-based unit. So it actually has a built-in move-on strategy. Project-based vouchers are often used as a strategy to encourage development or rehabilitation of high-quality, affordable housing units. They provide long-term commitments of five to 20 years, renewable for up to an additional 20 years. And the housing authority may attach project-based vouchers to certain housing authority-owned projects without following a competitive process when the housing authority is engaged in an initiative to improve, develop, or replace public housing properties. So the Wichita Housing Authority continues to work with its development partner, Petra Inc., to develop the multi-agency center project, which we know includes a navigation center, congregant housing, or shelter, excuse me, non-congregant shelter, and affordable housing units. As we know, housing is the path out of homelessness. Low-income housing tax credits are an imperative funding source to develop affordable housing. And we are seeking to submit a single application that provides for building on two sites, 50 studio units of tax credit supportive housing with project-based voucher rent assistance for persons experiencing homelessness on the Park Elementary site at 1025 North Main Street, and an additional 125 units of straight low-income housing tax credit housing with project-based voucher assistance on the Via Christi site at 1030 North Topeka. And so this map shows the two sites, actually only two blocks apart, outlined in red. So the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, they're administered by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. Applications are scored in accordance with their qualified allocation plan, which is published and changed annually. Currently, there are 15 points available for projects where 60% or more of the tax credit units are supported by project-based rental assistance. And but a commitment from the PHA is required to be submitted with the application. And the next round of applications for 4% low-income housing tax credits are due on July 26th. We're also proposing investment of up to $6 million in public housing net proceeds from the sale of the single-family homes. This funding will be used to fill the development funding gap. It also defines the project as an initiative to replace public housing properties and allows the attachment of project-based vouchers without a competitive process. There is no impact to the general fund. The resolution and conditional commitment letter will not constitute a formal commitment of federal funds as it is conditioned on receiving the low-income housing tax credit award, securing all other financing necessary, a satisfactory subsidy layering review and underwriting, satisfactory completion of the environmental review, and receipt of the authority to use grant funds from HUD. The Law Department has reviewed and approved the resolution and conditional commitment letter as to form. And final grant agreements and the HUD agreement to enter into a housing assistance payments contract would be brought back to the Wichita Housing Authority Board for approval once all conditional terms are met. And so it is recommended that the Wichita Housing Authority Board approve the resolution and the letter of conditional commitment and authorize the necessary signatures. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sally. First question comes from Councilmember Glasscock.
Hello. Thank you for the presentation. I always appreciate hearing from you. I know we're close to the 26th, which is the application deadline. My only concern, well, I kind of have two, but my biggest concern is, do we know if private businesses have also applied for this? I know the Lytech credits are competitive. Have private entities in Wichita also applied for that? Are we competing against them?
We would be competing with any other statewide applicants for tax credits, yes. Both nonprofit and for-profit developers.
Do we know if any in Wichita have applied?
I have not been made aware of any other 4% application in this round.
Okay. And would we normally be aware of?
Normally, I would have heard, at least. Oftentimes, they're coming looking for other supports such as home funds and things like that. In this round, I've heard of no others.
That makes me feel more comfortable that we're not competing against somebody else trying to do the same thing in the area as well. Does it make it harder for, so let's say we receive this, does it make it harder for other Lytech credits or people applying for Lytech credit in the region to get this next year? Do they take a holistic, like 10-year view over different Lytech credits, or is it year by year?
It is year by year, but they do look at how close a project is to another project funded in the last five years.
Okay. I guess the last question I would have, I know we've talked a lot about the MAC, which I think the council is very supportive of, and that's why we did the purchase of Park Elementary. The addition of Via Christi to this seems new because it wasn't part of, I know it's part of a discussion maybe previous councils had regarding the MAC. It's not something that we had, and one of the reasons for Park was because there was space to be able to do that. When did we decide to add the Via Christi component to this?
The Via Christi component's been in place even before the last tax credit application.
Okay, I thought we had removed that when we had moved to Park Elementary versus Riverside option to Park, so.
Even when we had the Riverside option, the Via Christi option was still there.
Okay. Thank you for the.
Mayor, if I can, we obtained that option about the same time that we got the Riverside option, if I remember correctly. So it's always been meant to be part of a comprehensive solution. I will point out, and this has been borne out in cities around the country that have been successful, our MAC is only limited in its success if we don't have the ability to hand off and put people into housing, and especially housing projects that we have some control over. And so that's why this is, to me, this is just as important as the MAC, maybe even more important because I, you know, I think I quoted to some of you what happened in Dallas. And basically, you know, Dallas, a caseworker takes you, you have a very limited stop in their equivalent MAC, and then you're right put into a housing unit. And we know that there is a need for these type of affordable housing units. And we know that there is a need for these type of affordable housing units in the city that if we don't step forward and get aggressive on, we're not going to meet that need, and we're not going to be successful in getting homeless off the streets and into more productive work here in society.
Thank you for the historical context. Do we have the property currently?
We have an option on the property, yes.
An option on the property?
Yes.
And it's for?
It's actually a long-term lease, a 99-year land lease at a dollar a year.
Okay. Fantastic. More of my concerns was about if there was anybody else from private industry applying for this, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we plan on applying for the 9% Lytech credits for this project next year?
I'm hoping not. I'm hoping we're awarded in the 4% round, honestly. 9% are even more competitive than the 4% are. And we have not as, actually, urban areas get funded so much less than rural areas. Last year, there were 10 projects awarded in 9%, only one was in a metropolitan area. They have really written the 9% competitiveness to be pushed more towards the rural areas than the urban areas. So I think we'll have better luck under the 4%.
Okay, so if we are awarded the 4%, that makes us ineligible for the 9%?
Yes, yes. You wouldn't have both the 4% and 9% on the same project, but it doesn't mean we wouldn't be going in a future year for another project that we might consider doing under 9% or another 4%. I think if we need to stay ahead of this, we need to make sure we've got projects going in each year.
Okay. Thank you.
Sally, a couple of questions. Do you have estimated costs for construction of either of these two buildings? And also remind community how it's getting paid, specifically the construction cost, since the MAC is $8 million in renovation slash construction?
Sure. So for the MAC, which will be the navigation center and the congregant shelter, I mean, we're having some rough estimates, around $8 million to complete that. The 50, now, when I'm talking about 50 units on the building on the MAC property, it's 50 units of housing that's covered by Lytech, but also 25 units of non-congregant shelter. And so we are actually integrating, it'll actually be 75 units in one building, 50 of them Lytech units layered with public housing, 25 units on the ground floor will be non-congregant shelter units. Those would be funded with our city HOMARP funds, the non-congregant shelter units. The, we're talking, you know, $6 million in public housing proceeds, low-income housing tax credit dollars. The site at the Via Christie site, we're looking closer to a $20 million project all in, and it's going to be really dependent on whether it ends up exceeding three stories. If it, once it hits four stories, it converts from residential construction to commercial, which really pushes the prices up. So we don't have solid numbers as of yet on those, but coming very soon.
So 6 million is allocated for the Park Elementary MAC additional new building?
As well as, I mean, the 6 million is overall between the two sites, and that's just gap financing between both the Via Christie and the Park Elementary sites associated with the housing units, because the public housing proceeds can only be spent on housing units.
Can you explain how Petra, the development partner, I guess, either puts money or how does, how do they play a role?
So Petra, they're our development partner, so they're coordinating and collaborating everything around construction, bringing in the New Market Tax Credits as another avenue for funding towards the MAC that we're still evaluating. They're bringing in the architecture firm, the tax credit consultant, as well as a New Market Tax Credit consultant. So they're really the ones that are pulling all the strings and pulling everything together.
Thank you, Sally. I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take the recommended action, approve the resolution, and letter of conditional commitment, authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll start with appointments, councilmembers. None, so I will read off this. This is the list for the Design Council. Matt Cortez, architect. Chad Glenn, architect. Steve Voe, engineer. Brett Lakowski, engineer. Bill Gardner, graphic artist. Brent Thomas, landscape architect. Janelle King, at-large. Armando Minharez, artist. For the Diversity Inclusion Civil Rights Advisory Board. Selena Farrow. Josh Shorter. Arthur Allen. And Talia Penn. For the Transit Board. Representing the large employers, Michelle Gifford.
I move to approve the appointments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Councilmember Common. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. This last Saturday, we had a very successful event in Plainview. I just want to thank everybody who came out. The mayor was passing out flyers along the parade route. Dalton made a supplies run when we were running low, so I do appreciate that. Councilmember Johnson, we had an issue getting a grill out there, and he came out and moved it back and forth for us, so it takes all types here. Also, special thanks to WPD for keeping us safe along the parade route and shutting down the streets and interacting with the kids afterwards. The fire department was out there as well, and our Parks and Rec staff, great job getting trash cans, great job getting the stage out there, great job getting the porta-potties out there. So there's too many community partners as well to thank. The Violence Interrupters were out there passing out flyers as well the days before. They really hit the pavement, so we got a lot of kids interested in some of the resources that we have to offer. It was a nice rally afterwards as well. We found some shade, and that makes a pretty big difference. So I anticipate success with this Unity in the Community program going forward, and thanks to everybody who had a hand in it, and thanks to everybody for coming out. So, thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. My congratulations on a great event. As you were doing that, though, I was taking my grandkids to Music Theater of Wichita. And what an absolutely wonderful, wonderful performance. It was probably in the top five ever that I've ever been to, and I've been going to them for a long, long time. So just congratulations to MPW and the staff for just a fantastic presentation and show. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to highlight my colleague forgot his brother, who was on the grill. Always got to bring up the other Hoheisel.
Thank you for that. How can I forget? My brother did step in at the last minute, and he did operate the grill, and there's one thing Hoheisel's know how to do, it's cook. So I do appreciate him, you know, he's a good guy, you know, he kind of conflicts with me every once in a while, but especially given the circumstances of that day, what happened prior to that, it is something that we need to do, is reach out and come to an understanding and see each other as human beings, regardless of our ideological differences, because at the end of the day, I might have, you know, a Republican uncle who would drop anything at the drop of a hat to come out and help me fix my car, or a Democratic, liberal-leaning aunt who, if somebody has a death in the family, she's the first one there to drop off a dish for the family. So that's something we need to get back to as a society, is seeing each other as human beings first.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to give my fellow colleagues and then also the community an update. The National League of Cities has asked me to be on a webinar tomorrow to talk about our work in Wichita regarding childcare. And so there will be electeds from all across the nation, as well as city managers and other staff. And the purpose of my presentation will be to highlight the work that the community is doing in childcare. Unfortunately, we got a really low ranking yesterday in a quality-of-life survey. I can send it to you all, but one of the main reasons that we received such a low ranking was because of our lack of childcare and our lack of affordable childcare. And so I just will take some time tomorrow to highlight our National League of Cities initiative and what we've been working on and what our future goals will be. Finally, one of the things that I'll mention that I'm super proud of and excited for is on July 27th, we're having a community meeting for childcare providers, and it's an opportunity for them to learn more about being entrepreneurs, because they are home childcare providers or center-based childcare providers are entrepreneurs. And so we're not going to talk to them about being a better childcare provider and teaching the ABCs. We're going to talk to them about how to be better businessmen and businesswomen so that they can thrive and continue to provide essential services in the community. So wish us luck tomorrow, wish we luck tomorrow at 2:00, and I'll make sure to try and represent our city well. Thank you.
I will just add a couple of comments. I just want you to know, just from hearing from our councilmembers, just how dedicated they are to community, and I 100% respect them and value each of you for your servant attitude towards helping our community. And when I say things about previous councils or past leadership, past administration, it is not a direct attack at any of you. It is simply a policy discussion or an emphasis or priority difference. As individuals, I respect and value you, and I want you to know that. And I am trying my best over the last six months in getting to know each of you and your priorities in each of your six districts, but I also have a responsibility for the entire city, and the budget is one of those major issues that not only the six of you and myself have to be very cognizant about, and I will be very mindful that I will have to communicate more directly moving forward about what we are facing in the years ahead if we are not mindful, again, of our fiscal responsibility to this community. So I do talk about the budget deficit because, again, the community needs to know and they need to chime in on what else are priorities to them or what we need to continue doing. So one of the things that I really love is, as mayor, I get to represent our council, and last week, we welcomed 1,000 athletes from all across the US, youth athletes in the soccer field. And I want you to know that this morning, our own Wichita Rush team, so Rush Wichita, won the championship for the 13-year division. So 13 U champions are now the Rush Wichita girls team, so congratulations to the young ladies here in our community. With that, I will, oh, Councilmember Johnston.
Mayor, there's a council policy that you have to play against the champions.
Not athletic. But I will encourage people to walk, as Allen mentioned, walking and biking. I don't do that very well, but I will walk. So thank you for that. With that, I will motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you for staying till almost 1:30.